Motion to excuse Mayor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor for Tim Roberts, and good evening, City Council members. You know, this is primary presenters. Julio Gomez will do some of the slides at the end that are CIP. We're going to go out of order. When I get towards the CIP, I'm going to skip over CI. Ana Miranda will skip over CIP, finish up the ARPA slides, and then she'll go back and have Julio step up and do his few slides on the CIP. And each of you should have an 11 by 17 of one of the slides about CIP. I just thought a larger font printout would be good because there's a lot on that slide. So I don't know if that's enough for everybody, but you can share. So again, that is a slide. I just wanted you to have a larger printout of what you see in the PowerPoint. And then, at the very end, I'll get back up because we have seven questions for City Council tonight that we want to make sure that back in direction from you on. Every year, we start this process by saying, this is a work in progress. What we're presenting to you tonight is a result of the work and effort to date. I'll cover that in some of the introduction slides. We will continue to refine our revenue projections. With revenue projection revisions, we will continue to refine and revise our expenses. As you'll hear tonight, part of this work in progress is that we are still working on the market adjustments for the some 60 employees who were not moved to market last year. So when I'm talking about the remaining employees and the general fund and the other funds that were not moved to market, I'm not saying every position is going to see an adjustment. We may find in this market study that some positions are at market. We'll definitely find that some are behind market. So Elizabeth Taplin has an update tonight for where she is at on that, but we don't have the numbers to present. We will present that at your first council workshop. Notice, I didn't say budget workshop. At your last regular meeting, council did agree to test out a workshop setting prior to a regular meeting. And so on July 8th, we will cover the market adjustment study that Ms. Taplin will have in a form good enough to present real numbers to council. Also, at that July 8th, we will do a comprehensive update to you about fleet. So two years ago, during the summer of 2023, as we were building the FY '24 budget, we had our big three departments present to council on fleet replacement and a five-year plan. We needed more time to update that so that it's a very good update to you about our fleet. And that's why that'll be on July 8th as well. And separate from those two items, we'll have one more item, if the one hour permits us to get to all three items. So tonight, after the main presentation, we do have an update from Police, Fire, and Public Works. For many of you, you're going to remember this from a couple of years ago when we were giving you a comprehensive overview of those three departments and last year as well. So I asked Chief Andres, Chief Troncoso, and Julio Gomez to update those slides and reflect, where are we today as of June? And I hope you find that very helpful for Police and Fire and Public Works. It also is reflecting, so what about the move to market? What does that mean for this council and this organization in the recruitment and retention of talent? We have a positive message. With your leadership and your support for moving our people to market to be competitive so that they have not the dollar reason to leave, but they would leave this organization for other reasons, you're going to find that our retention is much better or lower six months into the year than it was in June of last year. So really good message there that they will share with you. I already said that Elizabeth Taplin then will give you an update on where we are with employee compensation. And I apologize that I did not include this in the Friday packet, but if time permits, based upon how long council wants to go, Tracy Beekman's prepared a presentation that shares with you details around maintenance contracts and service contracts that reflect our information technology. And so we want to cover that with you. And some of those slides have like, they look like Excel spreadsheets. So I asked Tracy, you need to blow that up on 11 by 17, so the font's larger. So he'll hand that out to you as well. Those are the four presentations for tonight. I also handed out to you a single piece of paper. This isn't new information, but what I did is, I just went through the budget with Ana about the general fund. And I said, let's start off tonight by explaining to council how we're getting to a proposed budget that's just over $25 million. And for those of you who've been through the budget process before, these categories, the percent of the total budget, they're very consistent. All right. So right now, our general fund work in progress budget shows that we're just over $25 million. Again, that's going to change as we continue to work on the budget. This year, it's a $23 million budget. And much of the difference is going to be found in our move to market and the cost for our people, which is our greatest asset. So you can see here that, right off the bat, just to operate day to day, we spend $17 million for salaries and benefits of our employees. I've told council this, we've shown slides in the past. We have fewer employees per capita than other cities, and we do that because we're fiscally constrained. And so that 17 million, or 67% of the total budget, you'll find is a very similar percent of a total general fund if you looked at other city budgets. Because we are a service industry and people are the biggest expense in that fund. Now, in addition to that 17 million, we pulled out the training, travel, and conferences, and that's 228,000 in the proposed budget. Now, Police and Fire, which have many mandated types of training, there are 136,000 of that 228. Now, council and all other employees total 92,000. So what you can tell there is that we spend less than 1% on training and professional development, a very reasonable number. And again, in the past, when we presented to council, it has been in that same range. You'll find in this budget, just like last year, we pulled back, though, on training across all departments while leaving the necessary training in place. Underneath that, we showed a PPE, that's personal protective, and Police, Fire, Public Works as well, safety supplies and uniforms, that's at 300,000. Technology, this will be detailed in Tracy Beekman's presentation, but that's $1 million. Capital replacements from the maintenance contracts and services contracts, capital replacement primarily PCs, personal computers, laptops, and such, that's 118,000. We replace computers on a five-year cycle. Now Tracy may correct me and say there are some that are on a cycle that's fewer years, and that would be dependent upon the way that they're used and the way in which that they're really worked hard. So generally, though, a computer for a city manager, city secretary, finance director is a five-year replacement plan. On fleet, we spend $1.3 million. July 8th, we're going to give you a detailed presentation. That'll look very similar to the one that we did in last year and the year before. We have inter-local government agreements, and that's costing us 1.3 million. If I called out just two alone, it would represent the majority of that, 911 dispatch and EMS services. That's not all of them. The other ones are much smaller, but those two right there represent the majority of our 1.3 million. And I've said this to council before, we could not operate a dispatch center for less than we're doing through the ILA. It would exceed 1.3 million if we took it on. We could not provide ambulances at the level of service that we're getting from the shirts EMS program, which covers multiple jurisdictions, about eight cities, including us, plus Guadalupe County and the city of shirts, of course. And so that 1.3 million does reflect how we are able to, through the power of partnership, get better service delivery at a lower cost. Utilities and telecommunications, right? That's turning the lights on, powering our facilities, as well as our telecommunications, phones, cell phones, and so forth. We spend 600,000. Legal services, this is the city attorney's office, that includes anything around litigation. So council knows that we put a budget in for litigation, and if we don't spend it, it falls to the bottom line. But right now, that's in the budget for 600,000. EDC and, right, as council works through that, that number might get refined through the budget process as well as you select the new city attorney firm. The EDC incentives, 500,000. Contract services, 275,000. Now, I did not go all the way to 25 million plus because everything else is very small and miscellaneous, but you can see how quickly we get to a $25 million budget. So I thought this handout might be helpful because as we go through a 50-slide presentation next, all of this information is in there, but it's just spread across the PowerPoint. I'm not going to read this, but this is the outline of the presentation. Let me jump right in. We have seven questions for feedback and direction tonight. I want to start off with the budget development philosophy, our process, and our timeline. So the city staff works in shared leadership with the city council to manage growth prudently through those three primary things, financial prudence, sound debt management, and strategic long-term planning. Those four bullet points are representations of how we have demonstrated excellent financial management of our budget year over year. And I say to you, to the council, the way in which we go about developing a budget is, first, it has to be balanced. Second, it has to manage and be developed in a way that's consistent with our formalized budget and debt policies. And at the end of the day, to the degree that funds are available, we're tackling council priorities. You've seen this one before. We do it every year. We start off in February or March, doing just, here's the schedule for our budget. So right now, we're right there where staff has submitted their base budgets, and we're moving into determining the capacity and the prioritizations in the budget. And primarily, the general fund, we're focused on the general fund. We're working on all other operating funds and special revenue funds. So this year, the dates for our budget workshops are reflected here. Because the certified taxable values will come in after our second budget workshop, at a previous council meeting, we said we need to keep on the calendar an August 5th budget workshop that would be really focused on setting the tax rate. And then, August 12th would be the delivery of the city manager's proposed budget. And September 9th is your holding of a public hearing, adopting the budget and your tax rate. In between August 12th and September 9th, I always return to you at that second meeting in August, any additional feedback, right? Because on August 12th, like in the past years, council has the right to call me, meet with me, email me, any thoughts that they have about the budget. But I always check in with you at the second August budget workshop. Because this slide right here reflects that we spend months working together in shared leadership to develop a budget that, when it is presented on August 9th, council knows everything that's in there, and it's my goal that you fully support that budget. I won't read this, but these are key dates. It goes into detail onto, into what we're doing at the budget workshop number two versus tonight, as well as on August 12th. I did not include the July 8th meeting, which I already described, will be tackling two things, fleet and employee compensation, including the market study. So before tonight, the executive team, their staff, Ana Miranda, have worked to submit base budget. So every department head submits that base budget. Ana Miranda then meets with them to make sure, did they enter everything accurately? Did they include descriptions so that it's clear? Very often, we'll find an error, or we might find you forgot to include this. And so Ms. Miranda then has confidence that the initial base budgets are accurate and complete. Following that, she's, Ms. Miranda is continuing to follow our revenues. And up until today, here in June, we've received sales tax reports through April. And so April, we did get April, and April came in right around our forecast. Yep. And so what we're finding, six months in, is that we are, seven months in, we are on track with our forecast for revenue this year. So that's a good sign. And then, Ms. Miranda and I meet with the department heads, and this is where we have to start recognizing when we have preliminary revenue projections and where base budget expenses are coming in, we start cutting things. I'll use Chief Troncoso as an example. Sorry, Mario, but just an example. There's not a lot that we can cut in the fire department's budget. They need PPE to be safe when they're deployed. They need their fleet. They need the fuel to take care of that fleet. But one area that we look to manage during this time of growth is how much we actually set aside for training. And as much as I want to give him and every department head all the training that their employees would like, we had to cut back. And so there are standard conferences for firefighters. Instead of sending four, we're sending two. Instead of sending six, we'll send three. We did that last year. Mario came back this year and said, I'd like to restore that. Based upon the revenue projections and our base expenses, I said, we're going to have to go back to the same level as last year. And Mario understands that. I wish I could give him more training for his firefighters, but that's what happens in these meetings with the finance director, myself, and department heads. So we make sure that we're ensuring that we're covering the essentials to cover the day-to-day so that we sustain the quality of service delivery that we have today. Let me go over the city charter. I'm going to go quickly over this, but I think it's important. We have two new council members. You've never seen these slides before, but it's in our city charter, certain things that we have to do. Plus, I want to talk about the property tax process and calculation. So our city charter talks about financial procedures and the capital program, and the state has truth in taxation. I cite the state laws right here. So in our city charter, there's a section 7.02. It talks about the submission of a budget and budget measure on or before August 15th of a fiscal year. I have to submit it. That's why August 12th, I submit that budget. There's a public hearing on the budget. Notice there that it just talks about it has to be advertised. But section 7.06 talks about when council must act on that budget. And so it's at least 10 days prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year. So you have to make a decision on a budget no later than September 20th of this year. And that's every year. And so we always bring it to you at the first meeting. We had to have a special meeting one year, but typically, by the time we get to that first meeting of the year, we've worked through this budget, and council knows it's balanced, it meets all of our formalized budget and debt policies, and that, to the greatest degree that funds are available, we've prioritized and funded council's priorities. Your city charter, our city charter, in section 7.10, talks about the capital program and that you shall have a five-year capital program. And this details what it entails. And so every year, we work with you. We have a council CIP subcommittee that we have greater conversations with. We bring this back to the council. And tonight, you're going to see a preliminary five-year plan that the council CIP subcommittee gave input to last week, and we'll continue to refine that over the next month or two. Now, there's the property tax process. So we've already mentioned to you at a previous meeting that we get the preliminary tax roll from the Guadalupe appraisal district at the end of April. Now, Ms. Miranda can tell you at length just how much it changes between that preliminary tax roll that just gives us a snippet and the final tax roll. But under no circumstance do we forecast growth in that, in property tax, greater than 3.5% for properties that existed in the previous tax year. Because state law says you can only account for 3.5% growth. Now, all of us, we own homes. We may have an appreciation in the market of greater than 3.5%. The appraised value might be more than a 3.5% increase, but as a governmental entity, local government, the state of Texas, we can, for budgeting purposes, only account for 3.5% rise in property taxes. Of course, there are years in the past where property values have gone down. Right now, they're still holding stable and increasing. Now, it's the new properties that are built that weren't in the previous year that are tacked on top. So that's where we get an increase that's greater than 3.5% year over year. It's the new property that's added to the tax roll. Here, it talks about the truth in taxation forms. Now, the Guadalupe County Tax Assessor prepares that truth in taxation form. We don't just take it verbatim, though. We do look at it. Ana Miranda asks the tax assessor, I'm looking at this line. I believe that there's a different figure or a different calculation. And once we're in agreement with that truth in taxation form calculation, that is what we provide to council at a future budget workshop. And right, there's a range. There's something called no new revenue, where the revenue that you will get from all the property in the city will not exceed the amount that was generated in the previous year. That's no new revenue. And then there's the voter approval rate, and that's the rate that allows you to go up by 3.5% for properties that existed in the previous tax year, plus the new properties that have been assessed and added to our tax roll. So those, it's a range. And what we have done in the past years, since I've been here, this is my fifth budget cycle, is council's gone to the voter approval rate, and that's because of the increased mandatory cost and just the cost of doing business. Your tax rate is split into two parts. The first part is maintenance and operations. The second part is debt service. We have set our debt service tax rate at 17.93 cents for the past several years. So right now, we're at 49.9 cents total tax rate. You deduct the 17.93. The balance is what we use for day-to-day operations. I won't cover this, but this is in your PowerPoint, just gives you an example of, well, how do you calculate that no new revenue rate? Here's the voter approval rate, and notice it's referring to that 0.35% increase for properties that were in the previous tax year. This is the preliminary tax value, and I think this is the point where I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Miranda to come up and start talking.
The Guadalupe appraisal district does provide us a preliminary tax value report by April 30th this year. That's dated April 25th. They provide it in a range, and this range is discounted from the grand total on the tax rolls by four to 7%. The average discount last year was approximately 5%, and that's to account for those properties that have been protested. The values have been protested, and over the summer, we'll go through an appraisal review board, and adjustments can be made to those properties. And so that is the discount that is applied. The range that the Guadalupe appraisal district provided is 3.6 billion to 3.75 billion in net taxable value. And that does include a small 2.3% decrease in our industrial values as well, which are valued by a third-party independent consultant. As Mr. Reed was talking about, generally, when you see decreases in overall tax values, that would correspond to an increase in the no new revenue tax rate and the voter approval rate. And conversely, when you see increases in overall taxable value, you would expect to see a decrease in the no new revenue tax rate and the voter approval rate. I wanted to show you the prior year range as well. So the range that I mentioned, 3.6 billion to 3.75 billion, is very close to the prior year values. The median of the current preliminary taxable range is only slightly higher than the median of the preliminary range provided in the prior tax year. Certified values in the prior year were slightly higher. Once they certify in July, they came in slightly higher than the maximum of the preliminary range, and that, that slightly higher was less than 1% difference. We do anticipate similar results for the current tax year. They generally are conservative when establishing this range, and so we do expect it to be at the higher end of the range. With little growth in assessed values, our five-year debt capacity is projected to be slightly lower than the prior estimate of capacity, given that stable tax rate of 17.93. And Wayne actually did cover some of the slides I was supposed to cover, so we're flipping back to him right away.
I was clicking on the invisible buttons down there. So council, Ms. Miranda and I, and actually several members of the executive team, we talked about, what are these headwinds? And a headwind is something that is increasing expenses, increasing demands on the city. And I thought it was worthwhile to identify these very clearly in our first in our first budget workshop so that you understand the challenges we're having in balancing the base demands to run our day-to-day as well as to fund the things that are required in the coming year. When I say that, an example would be council recognized, this is just one example. Council recognized that our police department was running on a 20-year, roughly 20-year-old records management system. I would equate that to a computer that used to show the green screen with a DOS program. And we're in the 2020s, midway, and we are running on that system. Council said, that's not acceptable. It doesn't allow our police officers to enter their reports while in the field. It requires multiple devices to take photographs and attach those photographs to the records management system. And so you made an investment. We are upgrading to a modern and robust records management system for our police force, which will help them be more productive. Well, we pick up a new maintenance cost for that, and that's about $93,000. I might be off on that a little bit, but that's a mandatory cost. And council was aware of that, right? It was unacceptable to stay with a 20-year-old system that made our officers less productive. And this is just part of doing business. So that's a headwind. And let me walk through those. So we, we just covered some reduced growth noted in the preliminary property tax values. They're still going up. And so the growth year-over-year in the past has been around 4% when you talk about the growth in existing properties, plus the new properties that were added to the tax roll. But this year, it came in just under 3%. Our sales tax growth this year is on target. As I mentioned earlier, we just received the April tax revenue. Because the state collects the sales tax, they remit it two months in the rear. So that we're always talking two months ago. Some people may say, well, why aren't they talking about May or June yet? That's because we're always looking in the past based upon the pace at which the state remits the sales tax. And so we're very confident right now, barring any major national economic issue, that our forecast is holding. And we're going to project that it will hold through the end of this year. Slowing building permit activity in early 2025. What happened here was just this confluence of most of our major builders running out of lots. So think about Red River Ranch, fully built out. That started just as I began here. It's fully built out. The same builder there, over in Steel Creek, ran out of lots. Council recently approved the preliminary acceptance of unit six? Or Julio, was that final acceptance? Yeah, it was final acceptance. Very sorry, council, that I said preliminary. So final acceptance. They now have a whole new slew of lots. And if you go over there, they have already pulled in excess of about 20 permits. And so when a major builder runs out of lots in a community, and that major builder, month over month, is the largest percent of all permits pulled, when they run out of lots, you see it. So we surveyed all the builders in the community. Matt Hansen, our chief building official, just called them up and said, hey, we want to understand what your forecast is for the next 12 months, next 18 months. Very positive. And we see the lot inventory that will support that. We also have the reserves at Buffalo Crossing, another subdivision that'll have multiple home builders. You have Perry Homes that's going in at Bella Rosa, right behind the Legacy Traditional School. So we feel very confident that our permit activity is on the uptick, particularly on the residential side. We saw no slowdown on the commercial side, as you all have witnessed by the number of ribbon cuttings that we do in the city. So this is the, the next headwind is the last year of ARPA funding to support public safety personnel. In my 27-year career, I've never seen two market adjustments in a four-year budget cycle. Every city of note that you can think of has done two market adjustments in the last four budget cycles. For us to fund the first one back in the FY '22 budget, we leaned on the American Rescue Plan Act. And this year, FY '25 is the last year we are using ARPA funds. So in FY '26, we're picking up $250,000 that we used in FY '25. We're using our own local dollars. So we are now past ARPA in your proposed FY '26 budget. Yes?
How many of those FTE positions were covered by ARPA for the market value increase?
So the entire sworn and uniformed positions in police and fire were funded by the use of ARPA, starting in FY '22, '23, '24, and '25. But each year, we said, to make this happen, we will wean ourselves off. So the first year was close to 1.7 million, and this last year was only 250,000. So we responsibly used ARPA in an eligible way. And we responsibly recognize you don't keep it up at that high level and think the last year you're going to be able to transition. So my answer to you is, is what I just said. So this is the last year, 250,000.
So it was primarily public safety?
It was all public safety.
Thank you.
Only public safety. And I would say council was courageous, along with the staff, to recognize that if we did not move to market in FY '22, we had no other fund, local funding source to do that. So it was a good use of those funds. And here we are, growing as a community, both in population and commercial businesses and revenues. And we've been able to responsibly remove and walk away from ARPA. So this FY '26 budget is fully funded by local dollars. Absorbing full-year costs for the public safety market increases. So through that Prop C, we raised at least 782,000. And the actual full-year cost is 1.1 million. So we are absorbing the difference. Let's call that 800,000. We're absorbing 300,000 in the FY '26 budget. Market adjustments for all other positions, not including the FY '25 budget. Again, on July 8th, Elizabeth Taplin will give you an update on what we find. And then increased healthcare costs. For those of you who have an employer and your employer is telling you the same message that their healthcare costs are increasing and that they're looking at, is there an adjustment to premiums? Is there an adjustment somehow to the way that it's structured? We're in the same boat. We're looking at that right now with our healthcare broker. And again, we'll have more of that in the upcoming meetings.
I thought we just did a two-year contract, did we not?
With our healthcare broker, yes. But year-over-year, with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we renegotiate based upon our claims. Every organization works that way.
They did provide us a two-year guarantee on dental.
On dental, which is small cost. Yeah. And council, what, what our broker does is, while protecting the confidentiality, is we know the claims that we have. And when you're an employee base, our total employees are 200. But of that, Ms. Taplin could probably insert a number right now. But we have about 130 employees that are on our healthcare plan. If you have five employees, I'm making this number up. This isn't reflective. Five major claims in a year, you will find that the healthcare provider is looking at an increase year-over-year based upon their formula of how they price out healthcare. And every, every employer has this, right? We're made up of people. And what we want to do through our benefits program is take care of our people at a rate that we can afford and that the employees have some skin in the game. Continue, let me move on. Continued challenge recruiting police officers. Overall vacancies are down. I'm not going to give away the punchline for Chief Andres, but you'll hear the positive message with our recruitment for police as well as for fire. We are, because of our limited staffing, recognizing that overtime costs are increasing. And so both Chief Troncoso and Chief Andres will give you in their presentation an explanation of how our overtime costs are driven by our minimum staffing. We also have increases in inter-local government agreements for 911 dispatch, Shirts EMS. At your last meeting, you were presented on the Shirts EMS ILA. And the cost year-over-year, that's 131,000. And then the Guadalupe appraisal district, the GAD facility will not impact our FY '26 budget. It will be in FY '27. But there's a minor increase in that particular ILA. I spoke earlier about utilities, telecommunication, and contract services continue to increase. Chipping fee was eliminated as a result of our solid waste franchise agreement. That produced about $113,000 in the general fund. We eliminated that as a recognition that we are increasing costs because there had not been a solid waste increase in residential commercial rates for seven years. And to balance and moderate our cost increase, we eliminated the chipper service, which eliminated the chipping fee. Also, funding new position remains difficult in this balancing act with revenues and these costs. In FY '25, departments requested 16 positions, of which five were in PD and three were in fire. And we're at a breaking point, really, with our internal support services. Our finance department, when you look at it, I'm not counting utility billing. That's in the finance department, but it's really a separate area. We have four personnel. We have one procurement officer. We have one accounting, accounting manager. And I'm sorry, I meant day-to-day checks, accounts payable. One person doing that. And we have one accounting manager. And then we have Anna. For a city of 38,200 employees, it's a very lean department, and the demands continue to grow on it. Over in human resources, we have Elizabeth Taplin, and we have two HR positions underneath her. And then in IT, we have two IT gentlemen, professionals, plus Tracy Beekman. That's a very lean internal staffing for an organization. That's been adding since I've been here. When I started, we were in the 160s in employees, and we're at 200. To not be adding to those internal services, there is a breaking point. And so as you'll see here, we are not recommending any new positions this year, with the exception that there are grant, grant positions in the police department that should the city accept the grant, we have to fund 20% of those positions. And that's in the presentation tonight. And it's the next one. It's 100K to fund those three positions. The Safer Grant. Now, this is the grant that we have been going after since I've been here. And maybe Chief Troncoso was trying before FY '22. And we, we were not successful in years past. We're going at it again, right? We, we will not give up on trying to go for a Safer Grant because in years past, it covered 100% of the personnel costs for three years. They changed the program this year. They're going to pay for 75% of salary and benefits in year one, leaving the rest to the local match. In years two and three, that percent goes down. We'll still take that. But if we do successfully get awarded that Safer Grant, we're going to have to come back to council and figure out how to fund that. We can wait for six months after the award to begin the positions.
Mr. Reed, can I also ask real quick? Of the funding new positions, you had said 16 total. I know that we're not going to do that, but just curious, since eight of them were public safety, what were the other eight for?
I don't have that at my fingertips, but I could email that to council.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to turn back over to Ms. Miranda.
I'm going to provide a general fund overview, fiscal year '25, adopted budget, year-end estimate, and our '26 base budget. The general fund revenue overview shows an adopted budget of 22.9 million in revenue. And we expect to end the year at 22.7, which is within 1.2% of the original adopted budget. Some of the variances include elimination of the chipper service fee. And that would be effective July 28th. So the last two months of the year, that chipper service fee wouldn't be collected. And so it reduces the permits, licenses, and fees category. And you can see a further reduction in FY '26. And then we have a reduction in court and alarm fees. And it's not, it's not only court and alarm fees, but there's also other miscellaneous fees in there, and that was related to credit card fees. When we created the Development Services Fund, most of the credit card fees are related to development services and not to the general fund. So that change was made to get to the FY '25 year-end estimate. In FY '26, we are projecting 24.2 million in revenue in the general fund. And that's a $1.3 million increase over the fiscal year '25 adopted budget. And that increase is in property taxes. Again, the 3.5% limit, assuming that we go up to the voter approval rate and accounting for new property on the tax rolls, we expect to see an increase in property taxes. An increase in sales taxes budgeted conservatively at 6% to 7% from this year's estimate. For reference, this year, we do anticipate to be about 11% to 13% over the prior year for sales tax. But that, that revenue source remains uncertain. That is more variable, of course, than property taxes, which are the most stable source of our, our revenue. Sales tax is a little more volatile and subject to changes in the economy.
Ms. Miranda?
We are projecting more conservatively.
When you say new properties?
New properties on the tax roll?
For the people at home, that's just new bills. That's new development. Not that we acquired any more because the state has tied their hands on getting the property.
Right, we have not annexed any additional areas.
Understands that.
Yes.
They're like, what new properties are we getting? New, new development, new houses, new, new businesses.
New residential construction, new commercial construction within our existing city limits.
Can you, the permits and licensing decreased pretty considerably on our anticipated income. What is causing that?
That is the chipper service fee. So one year, one year of fees at a dollar per resident per month is about 150,000 to 160,000 is what we were budgeting.
Okay, and that was just paying for the service itself? So it was a wash for us? That money wasn't being used for something else?
We will be able to reallocate staff to other duties and, and potentially reduce some overtime related to, to chipper.
Okay.
But it's not reducing any, any staff by any means or...
And then the other financing sources dropped to 25 from 250,000?
Other financing sources are like sale of assets. We have not budgeted yet for any new vehicles. And when we budget for replacement of vehicles, we do sell, sell the asset and make up the difference. So we haven't budgeted for new vehicles, so we don't have a sale.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Line on there. We also have an increase in the franchise fee from the water and sewer fund from 3% to 4% in the intergovernmental line. And these are offset again by, which I just mentioned, the elimination of the chipper fee. General fund expense overview? Yes? Intergovernmental and transfer revenue actually is our revenue from other governments and also transfers from other, from our utility fund. So the SRO, for example, inter-local agreement is in that revenue source. Our arrangement with Guadalupe County is also in there. In this intergovernmental line, you do see the increase for the ILAs. So on the expense side, I'm also showing the adopted budget as compared to the year-end estimate and the FY '26 budget. The increase in the FY '25 year-end estimate, going from 23.2 million to 23.6 million, is an increase in capital for the replacement of the fire truck. We always want to focus on that fire truck that Fire Chief gets. So, so capital did increase from 46,000. We budgeted to 759,000 for that. We did pay for that from fund balance because insurance proceeds were received in a prior year. So it did increase our fund balance in the prior year to pay for that. You can see that fund balance or our reserve projection is by point, almost 6 million. And is at 29.3% on our year-end estimate column, which is up from the 28% that we originally projected in reviewing the FY '25 budget last year. Our FY '26 projected budget, which is still in development, as Mr. Reed mentioned, salaries and benefits at about 17 million, services, utilities, and training at 3.6, general supplies and repairs at 1.5, capital-related 135,000. Intergovernmental is where you see that increase to 1.9 million for the ILAs. Intergovernmental is where you see that increase to one-point-nine million for the ILAs. And transfers and financing payments are in line with the prior year for those enterprise leases.
Ms. Miranda, I have a quick question. And I may have missed it, and I apologize if I did. Where it says services, utilities, and training, what are services? Because Mr. Reed did say that the training budget was not, you know, I didn't quite hit what y'all did for training, but what does services include?
Services includes all of our contract services. For example, we have regular maintenance of our elevators. We have regular maintenance of generators at the police and fire department. We have contracts related to third-party, well, all of the IT maintenance software. All of those contracts are included in there. Other services also include professional services, so engineering services for traffic studies, engineering services for streets. Actually, not in this budget because we separated the Development Services Fund from the general fund last year. So that third-party cost is not in there. But legal services is included in that, professional services. Throw out some contract services if I saw. Our EAP is in that.
Would that include the UDC rewrite? Would it include the Old Town Master Plan?
Yes, it does, it does. And those are one-time costs, but some of the recurring costs are like municode. Every time we have code updates and they go to municode, that is a contractual cost that we have with municode. And we do ask the department to put in the specifics on all of their contracts. It's one thing that we kind of do zero-based budgeting on, is contract services, professional services, training, those things that they take from zero and have to add each line, each service item in detail in the budget.
Okay, I have another question regards to training now. Because when you were talking about training, you specifically mentioned fire and police, which I agree one-hundred percent, that is very important. But what about our public works department? They need training as well. Some of the instances that they need to come across, they have not been trained on necessarily, or they need to maintain their certifications and whatnot, and they're not able to go do that. Do y'all include dollars for public works in the training?
Yes, we do, for their continuing the CDL program, for continuing certifications with pesticide application.
We don't have anybody who has a pesticide application right now.
We don't at this time, but the hope is that we will buy some additional training in that area.
And we're happy to provide you what that training looks like by department council, if you want to see that.
Please.
Every department head is required by me to show me how they're building their training because it's not just a bucket that they get to put the same amount in from last year. I ask, what is this training for and who does it benefit? So we're happy to share that with you. We'll pull that out, and we'll provide that report to council.
Well, and one of the biggest reasons that I ask this question, too, is because when we had this flooding issue, our public works department, you know, drainage and the parks guys and the street guys, they were out there trying to help the police and fire as best they could. So, I mean, I know that they get trained on certain areas, but if they're, you know, I just want to make sure everybody's up to speed as to what needs to happen, and to help our other departments as needed as well. So that's why I'm asking about the training side.
Right, I completely agree. And we do have, we've tried to restore some of those levels of training that we reduced last year. Projected ending fund balance for FY twenty-six is five-point-one million. It is not currently a balanced budget with expenses exceeding revenues by about eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and it does bring our fund balance reserve down to twenty-three-point-five percent. And this is something that we're working towards closing that gap. We'll go over some of these mandatory increases in a little more detail. Mr. Reed covered them in headwinds, but putting a number to some of these. A full year of the prior year, cost of living increase and market adjustments increased the budget by three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand over FY twenty-five adopted budget, including the related benefits, public safety. Overtime increased by three-hundred-and-fifty thousand between police and fire, including related benefits. Inter-local agreements, the EMS services, a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, the dispatch services, twenty-five thousand. If you remember, we did apply two-hundred-and-eighty thousand in FY twenty-five to offset the large increase in dispatch last year. Guadalupe appraisal district, it's unknown at this time. We don't have their budget yet, but we did include an increase of thirty thousand. If you remember, Mr. Peter Snadden came in and discussed their future plans for growth. I don't think it will impact FY twenty-six budget based on what he told me, but it will impact the FY twenty-seven budget. Again, healthcare, ten to twelve percent increase is anticipated, which equals about a hundred-and-seventy thousand. The elimination of ARPA funds increased the budget by two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Utilities, telecommunications, and other contractual services, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand. And technology replacements are right at a hundred thousand in the general fund. I wanted to remind city council and anybody watching that what's not included in this base budget is a performance pay pool, market adjustments for non-public safety personnel, the required grant match for the grants, assuming that we are awarded those. Proposed fee schedule changes, we do need to go through and identify which fees may need to increase based on the service levels that we're providing. And as Mr. Reed mentioned, no new positions have been added to this budget, and no capital outlay besides the recurring PC replacements or technology replacements have been added. We've eliminated the additional funding for ACOG's On-Demand Response Transit Service, which was anticipated to increase significantly, and any other supplemental requests.
Ms. Miranda, the new positions, except for the three grant positions.
You're right, that's right. The MVCPA grant that we were awarded this year includes those three positions, and assuming that we're awarded that again next year, we have included those positions in this year's budget.
We know, we've been told for years that she's retiring. She is pretty determined to retire next year. So we need to make sure we've got the funds. I'm just, I just want to make sure we're budgeting because her sick time, her vacation time, her time that we floated, so I want to make sure that we're getting that in there as well.
I have included, I have, what I actually did was reduce the amount of vacancy savings that have budgeted by the estimated amount that we will likely pay out.
Make sure that we, I'm trying to be ready, but keep telling us. Just today, we'll make sure we get the funds.
This is my favorite graph. This FY twenty-six base budget shown kind of in a, I actually forget the name of the graph style, but it's a donut, several donuts. It shows that the twenty-five-point-one million, it shows that sixty-seven-point-six percent is salaries and benefits. And of that sixty-seven-point-six percent, or seventeen million, ten-point-seven million is public safety, or sixty-three percent, and thirty-seven percent of the general fund salaries are non-public safety. Services and utilities make up almost fifteen percent, supplies and repairs at six percent. The other expenses that you see are actually where the ILAs are, and that's seven-point-six percent of the grain slice. And then the rest of that is less than five percent in capital, transfers, and financing Original and year-end estimates for expenses in FY twenty-five are shown by department here. Major differences include vacancy savings in PD. Major differences between original budget and year-end estimate include vacancy savings in police department and savings from city council authorizing the use of the ARPA funds to cover the increase in the dispatch agreement. The increase in fire department, as I mentioned before, is a result of the funding of the replacement fire apparatus and using prior year insurance proceeds for that. Increased legal services, election costs, and IT contractual services make up the increase in administration. The other increase in administration is the allocation of the credit for salary savings. We budget a credit or a reduction in revenue for anticipated salary savings, and when that salary savings is recognized in all of the other departments, we lose that basically in the non-departmental budget, which is included in administration. And so, it looks like the administration budget increased, but what happened is that salary savings was allocated out of that area, if that makes sense. And the ARPA reimbursement and COLA adjustments is also included in the non-departmental and allocated out to other departments. Highlights in FY twenty-six budget, I wanted to, it's very in line. FY twenty-six, portion of a dollar or percentages based by department didn't change very much from the FY twenty-five original. Police and fire or public safety make up fifty-six cents of every dollar, twenty-three cents to administration, and that administration budget does include city council, city secretary, city manager's office, human resources, finance, IT, communications, and the non-departmental budget. Sixteen cents of every dollar goes to public works, and that is streets and parks and the public works administration budget, and five cents of every dollar goes to animal services, code enforcement, municipal court, and economic development. Over ninety-five percent of the one-point-million, one-point-eight-million-dollar increase is in public safety, public works, and administration. Details for the increase are on this slide by department. So in the police department, there's an increase from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six of five-hundred-and-three-thousand. The majority of that is market increases and overtime, as you would expect, health insurance, services and training, PPE, uniforms, safety supplies, and fuel for new hires. Right now, we're operating at, not at full capacity, we've had some vacancies, and we do anticipate hiring. And with those hiring of new recruits, you provide the equipment that's necessary for those positions. Building maintenance increases, the PC replacements, and of course, the dispatch ILA. In the fire department, four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar increase or eight percent, salaries and overtime of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, health insurance of forty-five-thousand, services and training, fourteen-thousand, building maintenance, ten-thousand, PC replacements, fifteen-thousand, and then one of the largest increases in their budget is the EMS ILA. In the administration budget, eliminating the use of ARPA funds is going to increase it by two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. The unallocated cost of the prior year COLA is twenty-five-thousand. Increased health insurance cost in this area is twenty-eight-thousand. IT maintenance contracts, which Tracy will have more detail on later, is a hundred-and-seventy-thousand. Utilities and telecommunications increased by twenty-thousand. Appraisal services, as I mentioned, from Guadalupe County, thirty-thousand. Election costs, we've increased from the original budget last year by thirty-thousand. PC replacement in these areas of ten-thousand, and economic development incentives, an increase of twenty-three-thousand. In public works, it's an increase of two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, or almost six percent. The majority of that is in salaries and benefits, and it is offset by a decrease in capital.
So for the salaries and benefits for public works and for fire, does that include market at all? I'm just, I'm curious why police had a market rate when we just did police, fire, and public works, or police and public works market?
That's the part that was not funded in FY twenty-five. So we funded nine months' worth in FY twenty-five of that increase, and in FY twenty-six, the full year cost. Our fund balance policy is the next section, or just a discussion really in general about fund balance reserves. Reserves is defined, it's a budgetary policy term that describes additional available liquid resources, such as cash and investments outside the budget to be used if appropriated funds are insufficient. These funds may be used for contingencies, emergencies, or other unplanned events. So the purpose is to mitigate current and future risk, revenue shortfalls, unanticipated expenditures, while ensuring stable tax rates. City council adopted a resolution in September of 2022, which was effective for FY twenty-three, setting the minimum fund balance threshold for the general fund at twenty-eight percent of recurring expenditures, and this was a decrease from the previous policy at thirty-five percent. It made funds available for one-time costs in that year. So what is the appropriate level to have in reserves? Best practices, there's no one answer. Should take into account each government's unique circumstances. There are going to be some governments that are more susceptible to natural disasters, hurricanes on the coast, for example, or tornado alley. They're more dependent on a volatile revenue source, or potentially subject to cuts in state aid or federal grants. So all those things have to be taken into consideration in establishing your minimum. GFOA recommends at a minimum, regardless of size and regards of circumstance, that you maintain at least two months of general fund operating revenues or general fund operating expenses in reserve. That's sixteen-point-six-seven percent. And the Government Finance Officers Association published a report in September of 2023 entitled, "Should We Rethink Reserves?" It's a very good article, it's pretty lengthy, but recommends that governments use risk analysis techniques to optimize the use of their reserves beyond adhering to just the traditional three months or two months reserve policy. So the approach can allow governments to tailor their reserve needs to their particular circumstances, right? Not a one-size-fits-all. So it's some things to take into account, is the predictability of your revenues and the volatility of your expenditures. Higher levels of unrestricted fund balance may be needed if you have significant volatility in either of those. Your perceived exposure to significant one-time outlays like natural disasters, the potential drain upon general fund resources from other funds. If general fund was transferring money into other funds to support them, that should be considered. And then the potential impact of the entity's bond ratings. We have a good bond rating as a result of having, among other things, having a good fund balance reserve policy. So that may be impacted if we lower our reserves. But you have to take into account, what does that mean? A lower rating may be a higher, slightly higher interest rate? You have to kind of weigh those factors. So again, reserves are essentially a tool for risk management. We also have other tools for risk management, like insurance coverage. So we have TML IRP as our insurance provider, and we have adequate insurance for any natural disaster, if we have a windstorm or a flooding, or we do have a lot of insurance, or sufficient insurance coverage, so that should be taken into account as well. And so, building reserves is a use of current resources, and you need to weigh the opportunity cost of, you know, is it better to provide services today or to save the money for later? So, GFOA best practices also indicate that a range, establishing a range is better than having one point express, there's a margin of error to operate within, saying, we think a range of twenty to twenty-five percent is adequate, and so if you go over twenty-five percent, you have one-time money to use. If you fall under twenty percent, then you may need to initiate cost savings measures. So having a single point is, creates a lot of stress for us when we have to maintain twenty-eight percent exactly on the dot. So it's just easier to manage that range rather than a single point. And it also accommodates different risk appetites, so the right level will, different people may have a different approach to what's considered the right level of reserves. It, as I mentioned, better supports the ongoing management of reserves because they do fluctuate from year to year. And it includes a floor that communicates the And it includes a floor that communicates the absolute minimum amount necessary to be a good steward of of taxpayer dollars. And then that ceiling to be able to use excess for one-time, one-time costs. So looking at the different numbers that we've talked about or ranges that we've talked about, the minimum per GFOA, sixteen point six seven percent. Our current city policy is twenty-eight percent. We also should consider that we have other unrestricted resources in other governmental funds. For example, the PFC, we maintain two and a half million currently in that fund that doesn't have a designated, a designated purpose. It's not restricted in any way. So that's, can be also considered emergency dollars if if we should ever need to access those. For every dollar that our operating expenses increase, we have to maintain an additional twenty-eight cents in reserve currently. So reduction in reserve limits, as I mentioned before, may provide funding for one-time costs. The difference between our twenty-eight percent policy and a two-month threshold would provide, for example, two point five million in one-time funds. The current calculated balance, as I mentioned earlier in our presentation, is at twenty-three point five percent or five point one million. And so we are between that sixteen point six seven and twenty-eight percent. If, that's one question that we'll ask council for feedback on tonight or guidance on whether or not you want to, you want to consider adjusting the reserve balance based on on risks. And there's a, a risk calculation spreadsheet that's also provided by GFOA that we can, that we can use to help assess that risk and then assess the current levels of imbalance that we would need. The next section is the allocation of property C tax revenue. I know this is a question that came up during our strategic planning workshop. Is just please, you know, please explain where the the additional tax revenue that we received from the tax increase, where did that go? The additional tax revenue generated by the forty-nine point nine cent tax rate over the voter approval rate was generated approximately seven hundred and eighty-two thousand. What we budgeted for new public safety personnel and public safety market adjustment was nine hundred, approximately nine hundred thousand. It was all budgeted in the non-departmental department? And you can see that it's highlighted or marked off in the blue squares, so rectangles. I wanted to show how that was allocated. You can see in this excerpt from our March financial report that there was a change in the Police Department from adopted budget to current budget, six point nine million to six point, or seven million. That doesn't account for all of the market increase. Fire Department went from five point three to six point four. That's a bigger increase than the market adjustment. And then non-departmental went from two point two to one point four, reduction because of the allocation. So those numbers, it's not very clear to anybody looking at it that that's where the market adjustments went. So I wanted to further explain that by showing each budget department by category and how we went from the adopted budget to the current budget. So the Police Department, for example, had an original adopted budget of six point nine million. And in that first column, that's in blue font, blue lettering, we added four hundred and thirty-seven thousand to their budget for that market adjustment. In the next section, in the Fire Department, we added four hundred and sixty-two thousand to their salaries and benefits. Of, we added four hundred and sixty-two thousand. The total of that, of of those two allocations is nine hundred thousand. We then reduced the non-departmental budget by that amount. We also made other adjustments. So the other columns represent the other adjustments that were made. We allocated COLA, and we allocated reimbursement from ARPA for public safety positions. And then we had other adjustments, for example, the two hundred and eighty thousand in other expenses in the Police Department in the upper right-hand quadrant. That two hundred and eighty thousand represents the, what City Council authorized to be funded by ARPA. So all of those adjustments take you from the adopted budget to the current budget. And I'm hoping that it's in enough detail to, to help you understand how those market adjustments were allocated. And Ms. Sanchez-Stevens, I'm, I'm kind of hoping that you, that this answers your questions on, on that. But we can, I can answer any more questions if you have them.
Right. Can you explain the, the blue section here? It says additional tax revenue generated by the tax rate over the, the ATR is approximately seven hundred and eighty-two. I know it was mentioned on a different slide earlier that, let's see, it says here, absorbing full-year costs of public safety market increases, parentheses, additional property tax revenue from Prop C equals seven hundred and eighty-two thousand. And actual full-year costs is one point one million. I guess whenever I add these two items together, it equals up to a little over one million. So I just, I, on the other side, it kind of seems like there is a discrepancy that we actually receive seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, but this is saying something different. And based on that other slide, it's saying that our actual full-year costs are one point one million. So I guess those two things just don't, they don't sync up very well. So that causes, it, it, it leaves it unanswered in a way. I mean, but I, I appreciate, this is good. It's just a matter of how do we get those numbers to match to where it makes sense? That even the public can just say, oh, this number adds up to this. Oh, I see, that equals that. And so it's just making sense, just the, for the, the common person who can look at that.
Okay. So the, the seven hundred and eighty-two thousand is not actually shown on this slide, except for we're calling it out. So what's shown on this slide are expenses, and the seven hundred and eighty-two thousand was generated in additional revenue. So it's on the, on the credit side of the income statement or the revenue side. So even though we only received seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, we had additional funds in the general fund to support a market increase to public safety. So for example, if, if the, if the voters had not approved the tax rate increase, we would have still had two hundred thousand approximately to try to give some kind of cost of living increase to to public safety. And that money combined with the seven hundred and eighty-two thousand funded nine hundred thousand dollars worth of increases. One firefighter plus eight hundred and ten thousand in market increases.
Okay, so that makes sense. So I guess.
And then the nine hundred for last year in FY twenty-five was only for nine months of, of market increase. And the one point one million that is on the slide under the headwinds is for a full year's cost.
Okay. So I, I guess in looking at this, what would have helped me right away, just a common person, right? Additional tax revenue generated by the tax rate over the ATR is approximately seven hundred and eighty-two thousand. The additional cost came from the general fund. I think that would automatically, if someone were to read this budget, they would know, oh, we didn't get over a million dollars on the tax proposition. But it says Proposition C here, so it makes anyone look at this and say, oh, we made over one million. I don't understand how we're short here. So I just, for, just for more clarification, so just the common person can see that. Not everyone has a trained eye for budgets, and there's a lot of, you know, verbiage that, you know, the common person off the street doesn't take, get, to look at this every day. But making it make sense is so important so that there's no doubt.
Okay.
My, my question is the fact that last year I was asking us to use the three percent to go down to twenty-five percent, and we are five percent below, or we're estimated to be five percent below twenty-eight percent. How did we get in that, that mess?
Our expenses have grown more than our revenues.
And if I can add.
Well, that's why I figured that's what she's asking. But I, I mean, I was asking last year to help pay for, for some of our, our workers to get up to value is knock it down from twenty-eight percent down to twenty-five percent. And everybody's like, no, no, no. And yet, we're below even the twenty-five percent right now.
So to add to the dialogue here, I made it very clear to council last year that if you were only entertaining up to the voter approval rate, which was about two point two cents under forty-nine point nine, we would not be genuine in saying we're trying to find a way within our tax rate to fund a market adjustment for Police and Fire because of the numbers that Anna Miranda just shared with you. Even lowering the fund balance through a risk analysis last year would not have funded that. I think what Anna showed earlier was it's about a five hundred thousand dollar. What's the difference between twenty-three point five and twenty-eight percent?
Under four hundred thousand, what it was last year.
No, what I'm saying here is, right, right here, the difference between twenty-three point five percent and the twenty-eight percent is a million dollars.
Well, this year, last year, it wasn't like, it was like.
Right. And remember, and remember, this is one-time money. It's not recurring, recurring money. And so I, last year, I was just very clear with council. To find a way to move our Police and Fire to market will require us to have a courageous conversation about our tax rate.
So I want to kind of add on to what Norma was saying about the money that was used for, used from the tax proposition, the tax rate increase. Because it's most likely taxes are probably going to go up this year just because everything else is, all of our expenses are going up. I think it's really important that we're very, very clear, and we show exactly what that money went to. So I'd like the, the easy graphics, the easy to see one, the dollar bill that's broken down. We could do something similar with the salaries or show that this is how much money the tax proposition brought in, or, and this is how it broke down. Or this is how much that market rate increase cost. This much was covered by that tax rate increase, this much was covered by general fund. Just so that it's very easy to understand because there's going to be questions, well, we just raised our taxes last year. What'd you do with that money? You're wasting it. So I think it's very, very important that we start ahead of that and we show we're transparent with where that money went. Here's exactly where it went in a very easy-to-understand graphic.
We're actually going to skip ahead in your packet and come back to the CIP. And we'll cover the ARPA funds update. We, I think with the last time we went over this was December, when we had, you know, make sure to obligate all of the ARPA funds. They, they have all been obligated by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Eighty-nine point seven percent has been spent, and ten point three percent remains encumbered on ongoing projects. Yes, sir. The projects that have been completed are shown on this slide. We began in twenty twenty-two. And I'm showing up through twenty-five, twenty-five year-to-date of what's been completed. And the total is four point nine million dollars in projects completed, including three point one million in personnel costs.
And then, council, I just want to correct. I said earlier how much we used in ARPA in FY twenty-two. This one is accurate. It's the one point, one million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Just to point that out.
And it decreased each year our reliance on the ARPA funds for personnel costs. These are projects that are still in process. Very near completion is the Animal Services Facility. In fact, I think, I mean, a canopy, I think, was one thing that we had been waiting on. And I think it's, it's probably been received at this point. So that may, that may be ninety-nine point nine percent complete. Shady Meadows Deer Creek, the Green Valley Low Water Crossing, the Retail Study, these are all still in process, along with the UDC rewrite, project management software, the Main Street Crosswalk Infrastructure and the Sidewalk Program. And the dispatch ILA increase, we're applying that throughout this fiscal year. So that remains in process.
Main Street Crosswalks, does that have to do that we need to take care of that to get the AAMPO funds? Is that part of that? Kind of that we had to give specific twelve?
Yes, we would put this thirty thousand towards those twelve. I'm not saying it covers all twelve, but.
No, I know it won't cover all twelve, yeah. Okay.
The projects that are in process are twenty, two point eight million is what's anticipated. And we do anticipate, I believe, being near completion by the end of twenty twenty-five on all these. Let me go back to CIP if Mr. Gomez can share, talk a little bit about CIP.
Good evening. So council's direction, we're seeking council's direction on the five-year plan for the CIP. As you know, we're coming to the conclusion of our current CIP program. We're finishing up with the last six streets on that one. We already had a plan in place for FY twenty-six. We had a projected funding balance to be four point five million, three point four. That is going to go for the FM eleven oh three participation contribution to Tech Dot. We allocated seven fifty for parks improvements that year, and we had a street condition survey allocated along with a hundred thousand for Public Works Fleet. Previously, we had the debt model showing that it was fifty-four million, but currently we're showing a fifty-two million dollar preliminary. So we had our first council CIP meeting. And looking back, we went, when, when we had the strategic management workshop with City Council, we conducted an exercise where we went over parks projects, and we had City Council provide guidance on what City Council wanted us to do with those allocated funding that we had. As you know, we had some funding allocated for the Parks and Wildlife Grant, which we did not get. So we were looking at repurposing those funds and seeing what City Council wanted us to do with that. And we received direction on that to move forward with Nimitz Park and Veterans Park improvements for that, which we have in FY twenty-five, we're showing that there. We also conducted an exercise, we brought back our CIP presentation that we had and showed the projects that we were proposing, which included the Sibolo South Neighborhood, the Hakerville Extension, the lift station decommissioning projects, and Green Valley Traffic Improvements. During our CIP, City Council workshop that we had for FY twenty-six, we're still keeping forward with the FM eleven oh three match and our street survey. Currently, right now, we're showing that we might have some savings in FY twenty-five. So if we do identify that we do have those savings in FY twenty-five, one of the projects that City Council wanted us to look at doing is the Weena Road Reconstruction and Widening Project. And so we added that in FY twenty-seven because we don't have the funds available in FY twenty-six. So in FY twenty-five, FY twenty-six, we would actually be doing the design. So one thing that City Council wanted us to look at during this workshop is doing the design one year ahead of the project so that we were not trying to do both in the same fiscal year and starting the projects late. So this way, we'd be able to get design done in FY twenty-six. Come October twenty-seven, we're ready for construction on Weena Road.
Mr. Gomez, can we go back to twenty-five there?
Yes, sir.
I know that we're not doing the sod at the MEC, but have we gotten a cost on the sprinkler system?
No, so I'm, I'm going to get with David Howard on that one. I know we, well, we got budget, we got numbers back from when we put it out for bid. And I think that sprinkler system was about thirty thousand.
But we're not doing the whole thing, we're just doing the sprinklers now.
Yes. So we'll get that cost, and we're going to put the money for that. There were some other items that were needed at the MEC, so we were looking at possibly repurposing those funds to fix the, the restrooms. There's some issues with the restrooms on the roofing with the press box, and then with the scoreboard as well to take care of all those issues.
We're going to keep it over there at the MEC because I was sitting there waiting for this, I noticed that the, those are two true air conditioning units for commercial compared to what we had here.
Yes.
We've got one on each roof over there. So, no, and they look like they're getting, I know that they're getting old because that's put in a long time ago.
Yes. So we're looking at the repair cost for that. So right now, the estimates that, the preliminary estimates that we got is roughly around fourteen thousand for those repairs. So we'll be looking at repurposing those funds for that. In addition, we'll be coming to City Council. In addition, we'll be coming to city council on the twenty-fourth with the proposal from the engineering firm that will be designing Nimitz and Veterans Park. So we'll be bringing that to city council. And remember, for FY twenty-six, so we have that seven hundred and fifty thousand in FY twenty-six for parks. So we had part of the funding now. So when we came to council, we wanted to do Veterans Park in one phase and Nimitz Park into two different phases because we didn't have the total funding available. So we're breaking that up.
And part of the, I guess it was a survey that people got to participate in at the last summer nights with the dots.
Yes.
Y'all are utilizing that to help?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're using that dot exercise. We also had a survey that had a QR code on it. That, that one is still live and Jeanette helped us put that on the Sibolo Tomorrow website so citizens can still go on there and conduct that survey. We're also going to bring that dot exercise back at the last Sibolo Summer Nights event in August. And we have Parks and Recs Commission that's going to help us do some outreach with that dot exercise at Nimitz Park in July. Also in FY twenty-seven, so the Sibolo Police Department, they have AC repairs that need to be done in their facility. So we're allocating five hundred thousand for that in FY twenty-seven. And we start design for the Sibolo South Neighborhood as well in FY twenty-seven. And then in FY twenty-seven, also, we're looking at starting the design and renovations for Schaller Park. And FY twenty-eight, we'll start the construction in the Sibolo South Neighborhood. The reason we moved that to FY twenty-eight is because we're hoping to get all the, all the utilities relocated for FM eleven oh three by FY twenty-eight. So that way, as part of that Sibolo South Neighborhood improvement includes the, the water line that we need to put in along Buffalo Trail. So we want to make sure that we can get that proper tie-in there and get, and try to prevent any conflicts with that FM eleven oh three project. Hopefully, it's on track with that one. And then, of course, we'd be starting design for the Hakerville Road Extension Project. And we'd start looking at the Tolly Nature Center in FY twenty-eight as well.
Does the design for Hakerville Road, maybe, or three more?
Yes, so we have that designed there. So that's with the water line and with the road. So it's ten percent, yes. So it's ten percent of the total cost of the actual project, which is estimated at seven point five million. And then in FY twenty-nine, we'd be looking at doing the lift station decommissioning. So that would include the Countryville and the Wild Road lift stations, decommissioning both of those, and completing the gravity fed line through there. That would tie into the Still Creek. So part of that is the Still Creek being completed by that time so we can get that proper tie-in through there. And then we'd start with design for Green Valley along with construction for a Hakerville Road Extension. And in FY thirty, that's when we would start the Green Valley Traffic Improvement for that one. So that one would be improving the, the traffic improvements along the school and area. I know we've been talking about putting in a turn lane in that area to try to help with the traffic and mitigate that, and then also adding a sidewalk for a pathway for people to walk along on that one. And we don't really have, we currently right now don't have anything allocated for parks in FY thirty. But we, any funds would be going into outreach or Schaller Park that we need to continue with those.
Reed, on the road, that's everything west of eleven oh three?
Uh, eleven oh three or Sibolo Valley Drive? No, I think FM eleven oh three, yes. Where the, where Schaller Elementary School is.
So Sibolo Valley Elementary.
Yes, Sibolo Valley Drive going towards
Saratoga?
Um, Saratoga, yes.
Oh, coming back?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So for the realignment between North and South Hakerville, years ago when I was on CP, just for people who aren't aware, years ago when I was on CIP in like twenty fourteen, we had talked about where Hakerville goes straight, then lowers again, then straight again, doing an S curve there to have a north-south connection south of seventy-eight. And so looking at the realignment between North and South Hakerville, for me logically would make sense to do in FY twenty-eight. If we're just looking at it or we're looking at doing the design for Hakerville Road Extension in FY twenty-eight, I think those should probably be done closer together because if we're designing Hakerville Road and then building it in twenty-nine, and then after we're building it or while we're building it, after we've done the design, that's when we look at the potential for a realignment that it seems like a waste of money.
Well, if I can
Right, they'll, they'll land that extension and stuff. Obviously, since it's a lot longer, we can't just have our fingers chopped off. It would be great if we could, but if we're going to be designing the extension of Hakerville Road, it doesn't make any sense to kind of Oh, do we?
We should, but Do you see the, the progression here? We're doing the design in twenty-eight, building in twenty-nine, and then looking at the realignment after we've designed it the year before. That's where, I'm just saying, we should probably look at caveats in there so we're not putting in millions and millions of dollars on this extension if it happens to need to be torn out if we eventually have a very benevolent benefactor who wants to donate money to us. Yeah, no, it's not
And Ms. Cunningham and council, I think what would be beneficial is to bring back the master thoroughfare plan that was updated in September and highlight how Hakerville Road becomes a, an important component. And I'm talking about the northern half of Hakerville Road of the future north-south connector, as I like to call it, we like to call it. And the previous idea of bringing the, the two Hakerville Roads into a continuous alignment is really an old concept, whereas the north-south connector takes Hakerville Road south of Lower Seguin Road due south, and then it swerves a little bit. So we'll bring back a presentation during this budget season just to highlight these roads that are on this five-year compared to the MTP. Thank you.
So a couple of things for consideration that's not in the CIP program right now is the wastewater projects for the South Sibolo CCN. Of course, one of the first projects that we would be looking at doing is that Hakerville Road and Bolton Project. In addition to that, we're currently looking at possibly getting that tied into for Fire Station Number Four. So we'll be talking with, with Freezer Nichols on, on looking at that design and seeing if that is feasible for us to include for that project. And then Phase Two of the facility, which was current, which was the Noble Group and we're currently seeking a new name for that facility. And then also doing some mill and overlay project for future years to tackle the residential streets. So I know one of the things that was brought up was, we'll be bringing that back, is the street maintenance plan that we've been talking about, trying to create an IMP for the City of Sibolo. We've already started to do that on a small scale, but we're trying to do that on a larger scale. And if you see the funding on the revised, so we do have some capacity in future years to look at some of these items. So these are some of the things that we'll be meeting with the CIP Subcommittee to try to determine on, on how we want to allocate funding for, for mill and overlay projects as well as planning for the future wastewater projects. So those are a couple of items that we'll be talking with them as well.
Mayor and council, excuse, Mayor Protim and council, as we get to your feedback and direction, over the past several weeks, I've asked Julio, his team, Jeanette Gonzalez, Brian, to create materials that better tell the story of how the city is, A, spending money to improve our infrastructure, two, developing a robust capital improvement program, and three, the, the different ways in which we are addressing our roads. And so we're just going to hand this out. These are flyers that we'd like to start sharing with the public, talking to residents with. And so I hope you enjoy these. If you have any comments on them for us to tweak and make better, please let us know. So as I'm standing up here, I'm going to ask council for your direction. The first question, does city council have any questions on the budget process or the headwinds that we're facing? Were we clear in our information tonight? Okay.
I do have a quick question. And now we're talking about the appraisal increase.
Yes.
The three and a half, three point five percent or whatever. What, I mean, is there any, anything taken into account about, thanks, the more properties being decreased in value and versus, I know you have your new, your new builds, but there's a lot of them that decreased in value that the new builds may not make up for. I mean, do y'all have some type of allocation or percentage for that?
I'll let you take the first.
When, when the tax office does calculate the no-new revenue rate, they take that into consideration. So if property values that were already on the tax rolls last year decrease overall, then the no-new revenue rate will be calculated higher to make up the difference. And so even if the rate is higher, the NNR is higher than forty-nine nine, it still wouldn't be considered a tax increase if it's a NNR.
You just triggered something from me, so if you don't mind.
And I'm just walking around the dais on this first question. I'm hearing nobody
No, I've got something now. She just triggered it.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay. Legislation, and I know that people are going to have to vote on some of these bills that passed. They're going to have to vote to whether, because I don't know if anybody knows this, but legislation did pass to help out those cities that do have a lot of disabled vets. But the voters are going to have to get out and vote on that in November.
If that's it, we'll
It will.
And Mr. Hicks, we evaluated the proposed amendment. It would not benefit the City of Sibolo.
Oh, it's not going to benefit
No, sir. I don't have the time to go look at the sponsors of the bill and what counties or areas they represent, but they targeted communities that were
I was waiting for legislative update, so.
I'm not looking at it right now, but it had to be a city between three hundred seventy thousand and three hundred eighty thousand.
Oh, I know where it's near that, okay.
And then another range for a smaller city. It's unfortunate that they play politics with addressing the state mandate that's been unfunded, but that's where we are.
Well, that was one of, that was one of the, but there's, there's many other ones that are we looking?
I, I think also, I think as a policy body, I would love to, after we're done with this budget, for us to make that a priority for this organization, to partner with other organizations, to really impact our state legislature. We'll have two years to work with them to address that very state mandate and try to get them to address it next legislative session.
Well, obviously, I mean, Shirts is going to get a little bit, but they also fall right where we are. I mean, two hundred thousand's two hundred thousand, but still.
Yeah.
It, it affects them because they've got a large population. I think everybody knows that it was Sibolo, then Shirts, then Colleen, Copper's Cove. But yes, all right.
Thank you, sir.
I do have one question pertaining to the policy on the reserves. And I know in the very beginning, when we were going over all the layout, how we're falling short to the twenty-three and a half percent. And you had mentioned, Ms. Miranda, that y'all were looking to see how to bridge that gap. So let's say, for instance, if council decides not to make a policy change on the twenty-eight percent, are y'all still able to bridge that gap? And how would that look like?
That is what we are still working on. So I don't have a clear answer. We would have to start cutting into things such as training. So that my, my first approach is to cut things that don't reduce our staffing levels. And so we will start looking at things that are needed but not mandatory. So we cannot cut mandatory training for police and fire or public works or somebody else that has a license, but we will reduce all other training. So that's a first place to, to look. And then we will begin going through the budget methodically to find the savings to get to that twenty-eight percent.
And also looking at revenues, looking at the fee schedule to see if there's anything that is, that needs to be increased, if there are any park fees, for example, or, and
And council, I'll tell you, every year when we start the budget process, we have a gap. So what we do here is we're produce, we're providing council information before you'll find other cities are getting, other county, city councils are getting information because other cities will wait longer so that they can get to that balanced budget. We are in front of you early on, showing you how that budget is getting formulated, so.
I know the county just started theirs, or they've already started theirs. I know Shirts has started theirs, so there are a couple around us that are already hitting that budget.
All right. Ms. Sanchez-Stevens? Okay. The next one is, does city council have questions about the general fund overview for end-of-year or the FY twenty-six base budgets? Okay. I'm taking that was clear. Does it, the next one, does city council have any questions about mandatory increases? Did we explain those headwinds clearly? And do you support us exploring a modification to the city's fund balance using the GFOA's risk analysis spreadsheet that Ms. Miranda talked about? We'd bring that back to you maybe at the July eighth city council meeting, not the workshop because we've already filled the workshop up with three potential top, with three topics. And, yes?
On that topic? I was tempted to ask earlier, but I'll save it until that presentation. But I'm wondering, when we mentioned other cities, for example, that have possible natural disasters affect them or industry things? I almost asked you, do you have firsthand knowledge of a couple of those cities that you could say were examples? And so between now and then, maybe you can say something about Orange, Texas, or
West Texas.
Yeah, places that, places that are affected, do they end up in the twenty-eight percent range or do they lower it a lot? Do they raise it? I'd be real curious to know a few real-world examples if you have any. Thank you.
So question number four, are you fine with us bringing back a presentation with that analysis of the fund reserve?
Yeah, I mean, bring it back and we can discuss it, yeah.
And again, we'll target July eighth if that's reasonable there. And then number five, does city council support moving forward with the proposed FY twenty-six list of CIP projects? Clearly a work in progress, but based upon Julio Gomez's presentation, are there any major concerns about the proposed list of projects?
No, the required bond funding, you going to talk about that?
As shown on the slides, we're with, within our debt capacity. In fact, the decommissioning of the lift station shouldn't be on that list when we're talking about our general fund debt capacity. That'll be funded through the utility fund. Yes, sir. Does, the project isn't being taken off, it's just moving over to the utility fund. And then does city council have any questions about the ARPA funds update? One thing, to be crystal clear, we are using every dollar of ARPA. We've responsibly tracked the expenditure of those funds and we ensure before the end of twenty twenty-four that all funds that had not been expended were allocated so that the city could say we used all the funds that were allocated to us. There are cities that did not successfully do that, and I'm very proud of how the finance department, working with all the responsible project owners, have ensured that we use those dollars.
Ms. Miranda, you had mentioned that you look at us being able to have spent all of it by the end of this year. I know that we have till the end of next year, but I thought I heard you say that it looks like we'll have it all spent by the end of December of this year.
Right, I believe, I don't think that any of the projects extend past that, but I think Mr. Gomez would be able to, to answer that better than I can. But I think all, all of the ARPA projects should be completed this calendar year.
Okay.
Yes.
And then?
Well, just one less thing that y'all have to worry about.
You want to?
Next year.
I, we, the cartograph or the software, my, we have one more maintenance year to pay for, and that may fall after December for the final year.
Yes, so the thirty thousand for the crosswalks, I just want to clarify, that was for the actual signals themselves. We did get those in, we're still waiting on some parts, so that one will be, we will, that was the funding for the lights themselves. So we just need to identify the crosswalks where to put those at. And all the other projects, we will be completed with those.
Five years?
Yes.
You're being, you're just having last Friday, is it one of the lights?
Yes, we're, we're waiting on parts, so we've, we've received some of the parts, we're just waiting for the rest of them and, but we're waiting on the rest of the parts for that. Yes, sir.
And last but not least, does city council have any questions in advance of the compensation and market study for non-public safety personnel, which Ms. Elizabeth Taplin will present in full July tonight? which Ms. Elizabeth Taplin will present in full July eight, tonight, you're gonna just get an update of the status. And with that silence, I'll assume, uh, no questions on the compensation and market study for now. Thank you very much, council. Uh, this was a point where we thought we'd take a quick break, uh, if council wants to take a ten-minute break, and then we'll start back up. So, uh, at eight-thirty, we will start our next presentation, which will be the overview of police department, fire department, and public works.
All right. Good evening, council members. Patrick Andrews, Chief Patrick Andrews for the record. So, we're going to get into our department budgets presentation of the slide. So, first question we have, does council have any questions about the progress on recruitment and retention of essential personnel, police department, fire department, and our public works based on information provided tonight? Does our council recognize the positive impact that the market competitive pay and the importance of remaining competitive, given the emphasis on attracting a younger workforce across police, fire, and public works? So, we jump into the police department slide. Across Texas, I think one of the things that I would share with council, as well as the US, we're seeing competitive pay when it comes to incentives like sign-on bonuses, as that continues to be a main driver for police leaving regional agencies to join neighboring agencies. It's just got to the point in law enforcement, we're just taking from each other, right? And those competitive pay incentives do sometime attract talent from your agencies. But thanks to our city council approving our bond initiative to go to the voters for them to decide about the public safety market increases, our police and fire departments have benefited from that. The city council has also, as you look at throughout this year, approved for us to have a police cadet position that was added to the police department, and this has positively made a difference in our recruiting efforts. We'll talk about a little bit when we get into the police department's slides on our staffing. Our market adjustments have certainly allowed the police department to retain our sworn officer ranks, which have been beneficial to us, but it's also assisted in recruiting more police cadet positions to our department. And we've also, with the market study, have been able to attract experienced officers to the department. So, as we talk a little bit about eligibility and hiring and our staffing, training. As we've discussed in the past, the process of becoming a civil police department is, police officers are rigorous and includes multiple steps. That has not changed, will always be the case when you're joining a law enforcement agency. Officers continue to be grown, to have a growing concern in law enforcement, and especially for police administration, as we look at wellness, balancing, the work-life balance, long shift and sometime weekend work are still trends across law enforcement that obviously concerns us when it comes to burnout. We're no different than anyone else. The civil police department continues, though, to receive high praise when it comes to the training investment that you've heard about tonight that make our officers' careers, sworn officers, and professional staff members in the police department meaningful. And that, that training that we, and the investment we make, well, many times in the department, as I'm speaking with employees, that's one of the things that they are more endeared about. They understand there's going to be competitive pay, we may not always be number one, but the city really believes in investing in our employees, not just police officers, our professional staff career. The civil police department, we've also cited, you know, importance for our police administration to continue to look at, you know, how we're supporting our families. Our employees sometime will always talk to us about a crisis that occurred in their family and how administration, from the police department to the city manager's office, ensures that our employees are supported and we also providing healthy wellness training for them. So, those are incentives that our employees, when you think about, why do I want to be at the civil police department? Those are positive. Twenty-four, twenty-five period, we did, we had approval for the MVCPA grant that added to our total rank, bringing us to forty-seven. And as I'll mention to council tonight, in the new SRO ILA, the SEUCISD is interested in adding an additional SRO to the police, to that program, which is, we'll talk about, is a zero-cost neutral program to allow our supervisors to now be able to be in the field and respond to incidents across campuses. So, one of the big things I'll talk about a little bit is that MVCPA grant. As council directed us, look for grant opportunities. We were successful in doing that this year and adding officers to that program. One important thing to note, as you start looking at our average years of experience, you'll see in the civil police department currently right now, sixty-five percent of our workforce has about one to five years of experience, sixteen percent, five to ten years of experience, and fourteen percent has about ten to fifteen years of experience, with two percent about fifteen-plus years. What I would say to you, there's no law enforcement officers that you see across the country as we hit this retirement bubble, people who came on in the nineties, they're starting to retire out of the program. Our numbers are probably very similar to many other police departments. We're getting younger as we still try to retain our professional and experienced officers. So, as we talk a little bit about, this slide discusses our FY twenty-six. This, this takes us back to last year. I really want to bring to council's attention that at this point last year, we had about four vacancies in the police department. We had about three in our patrol ranks, and we had one detective position that was vacant, that was moved back to patrol, as you all know. We had those four pending positions in the SRO program because we were working with an ILA. Those additional officers had not been approved to come in. So, technically, we had eight vacancies during that year, last year, this time, during the budget season, and obviously, the animal services position that was vacant. However, as we fast forward to this year, I want to call the council's attention that the PD has worked very hard to fill our vacancies. Again, last year, we had eight vacancies. You look at the police department this year, we currently, with the hiring, the hires that have been recently made, we have one officer position that is vacant in the SRO program, and we have one narcotics detective position that is vacant currently. This is without adding any of the grant positions, right? I think it's important for council to, to note that we, from October twenty-four to June second of twenty-twenty-five, have hired eight officers to the civil police department. We currently have three officers in the FTO phase, and those officers, obviously, will be hitting the streets and seeing them in patrol in September as probably solo officers, if training goes well. We have an additional five cadets that are currently in our training academy. Two cadets that we hired, we did not have to pay for their training because we hired them, almost eighty percent finished with the academy. They will be joining the field training process after they graduate July seventh. Those officers will then hit the streets and then, obviously, make their way to patrol. We have one officer that we hired in the month of October. They will graduate from the academy April twenty-six, start field training, and obviously be in patrol. And two officers that we hired in November, that will graduate from the police academy in May of twenty-twenty-six. So, I caution, I look at that to say, when you look at our positions right now, all of patrol, based on the hiring, are filled. Are they working in patrol today? No, but all of patrol is filled. One of the things that council talked about, right? And you'll see, at the beginning of the school year, we will be moving officers over to the SRO program, which will allow us to have about five to six of our positions filled. And then, obviously, as people come out of the academy, we'll be filling the rest of those, I think, by at least sometime after the new year. So, great things are happening in the police department.
Chief, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you have a fully-staffed for geographical policing model complete before you transfer more officers to, for the SRO program?
Well, when the officers are coming out, we'll talk a little bit about geographic policing because as they are rolling out, they will be moving into patrol, those positions will be in. But you won't see us have that geographic police model in place immediately. That'll happen as they come in. We have one SRO that'll be going over in September. And obviously, many of the other positions that are going to fill SRO, because that's the only officer going there, many of the other positions will be backfilled through the police department. When they make it to patrol, then experienced officers going in SRO. So, yes, you'll actually have that happening as they cycle through the academy and then transfer to SRO.
Another question. As I remember, the SRO policy or the officers that are going to be transferred over to schools would have two years' experience having been a patrol officer before they go. So, this means that most of our patrol are going to be new, young cadets. What is that, what's that going to look like based on experience of our patrol officers patrolling our city?
Yeah, great, great question. Obviously, we don't bring our rookie officers into the school, right? It gives us the time for them to be trained, us to monitor them, and make sure they're doing things the civil way. The officers who would join that, for our policy, would be officers with two or more years. Many of the officers we have going are that slated to go to the program. Some of them are some of our new officers who've been here right at two years, some three years. But you will still have veteran officers in patrol. But I just want to go back, again, sixty-five percent of our officers are ready within one to five years. Those are your patrol officers. When you look at the experience level of the civil police department, most of your officers that's falling within five to ten, many of them are sergeants, many of them are in an investigative position, but we're a very young police department.
And I just also want to ask one last question. The, the ones that you're intending to transfer over to the SRO program, will the school district also do the hundred percent, the, as we have had?
Yeah, the way the program is, is a zero-cost program because as we'll talk about here soon in this slide, many of them are earning comp time. There's only two officers in the SRO program where they pay full-time for their overtime, and those officers also work summer school months. Everyone else is in the comp time program, which obviously, as I'll talk about here, how that comp time is used and how it's a zero net cost to our city.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, I just wanted to just mention that I know last year when we were having this discussion, we wanted to support you in having a geographic policing model, and you are deciding to forego that, to postpone that, and bring in more cadets a long time, and you are looking to place seasoned police officers into the SRO program to fulfill that ILA. So, you are deciding to do that.
Yeah, the policy calls us for to do it, and it's a best practice. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, as we go to this slide here, look, this slide is basically a replica of the other one, but I want to call to your attention, as you see those grayed-out positions, if we had not added the MVCPA grant, which is a great thing, you'd only have two vacancies in the police department. Those positions have been added to the police department now, and now that gives us four officer vacancies. Again, that, which is a great thing. We, these are two grant positions, and that's what we fulfill the request that council asks us to do. Additionally, with that position, I think as council see, we're adding the crime analyst with the MVCPA grant. So, yes, as, as right now, we have a sergeant vacancy that will be filled once we start to fill our ranks, and that's what you're seeing. That vacancy as a sergeant has been held in the SRO program till we get enough officers in patrol. We're getting there. And then, we'll be able to start making that transition of officers there as we fill our patrol ranks, obviously, with our officers that are coming out. Okay?
Because I, I've seen some of our SROs out on patrol this summer. That's why I've got those questions as well.
Well, they are in patrol this summer. You see the SROs because they're patrolling the school campuses. If you see any of them working, I don't think you've seen any of them work in patrol. So, if you did, then let's talk about that offline.
Okay.
Because, yeah, let's talk about that. We, I, I'd love to have a conversation with you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right. So, as you look at here for reasons for departures, one of the great things that we talk about, you're starting to see our numbers reduced. We had two departures in FY twenty-four, twenty-five. Those were retirees. Obviously, we had one involuntary departure that occurred that year, and then we had an employee passing. So, that makes up your four departures that we currently had this year. So, as we talk about geographic policing, that is still a commitment for this police administration. I believe it's the best program to give us the coverage that we will have. Currently, right now, when you look at the civil police department, to implement that geographic policing model, that really comes with us assigning an officer to each patrol district, very, getting very close to that. Obviously, we have six districts in the city. Currently, on average, we have about three officers working per shift that, you know, average with the vacancies that we currently have, as we have, again, got officers in training, officers that are currently in field training and not working. The average patrol officer for us that are assigned to our districts within our patrol divisions, obviously, is based on that nineteen officer model we have in patrol overall. When patrol is completely filled out, we will have three shifts of five officers and one with four. That means, you know, one of your geographic districts, the officers are still providing coverage in that area. On another shift, it would be two areas that they're covering. We have nineteen officers totally in patrol. I would love to get us to a point, it won't be this budget season, obviously, to where we can have twenty-four officers in patrol and all of those areas covered. But that's where we're working towards. But as we get to full staffing, absolutely, we'll be in a much better position where we are currently.
And chief, on, I guess, the strategic plan level, when do you feel that you may be able to get to this geographical policing? The only reason I mention is because before I ran for council, I saw our patrol presence decreasing as we had more, you know, people moving in, you know, to civilo. So, that carry, you know, that takes our patrol to different needs and areas of our city, the more population you have. So, one thing that was motivating to me is to make sure to support the police department, to make sure that we can hire more patrol officers. Because we, even in the summertime, our families and our kids need to be protected in the summertime. So, to have a small patrol force, I, I would like to see, what is the strategic plan? How are we going to move there? At this point, we have increased our property taxes, we've opened up FTE positions, and we want to strongly support this happening. So, I just would like to know, when are we, when is a target date for that?
So, the target date, as we just discussed in the slides, for us having patrol fully staffed and officers working those streets is our last few officers come out of field training somewhere around April, May, right? That will, that gives us our officers out and in the patrol districts, right? These officers, the five that we have in training, we don't have them yet there. But when you hit that month, that would give us the opportunity in May of two twenty-six to have all of patrol totally filled with officers working solo, not with an officer. Again, that does not give you total geographic policing. It gives us the nineteen officers in patrol. It would take twenty-four officers, if we were able to have a budget to support that, to have an officer assigned to each of the districts. We're still covering those districts, but that will give you the model where you have each officer assigned. So, we're, we're not there. We, our patrol staffing has, has not been there based on the current staffing complementing patrol. Make sense? What you are getting, though, is an additional two officers in the heat program through a grant that will be working problematic areas, obviously, with the focus on catalytic converter thefts and crime, adding to your patrol complement. That they will be added, they're not assigned to a district, but they are proactively working this city. So, the grand officers give you more people on the streets, right? And that, that's, that's the ultimate goal, having more officers on the street as we work to fill all of our ranks in geographic policing.
No, yes, I just would like to see it grow a little bit faster, obviously, right? So, we could have, you know, the, the, the growth rate in population's not going to slow down.
Yeah.
And I feel that we're always going to be in arrears, we're always going to be behind, and we really do need our current staff, well, support it. I, I just feel that the, the lone numbers that we have, how long can you sustain that? And how long can they, I don't know what they're, you know, just thinking about their mental health. I think I saw in this presentation, burnout, things like that, things that happens to a, a small force. So, I just wanted to know strategically, what are we doing to push, to, to move forward to increase those patrol officers?
So, I guess that's the question I would ask. Are you asking base, because we, our current model is forty-six officers, including the grand officers, right? Are you asking, are we adding more officers? Because currently, with the staffing we have, we will have nineteen officers in patrol. And again, that gives you five officers on three shifts, four on the other, on, on an additional shift. That's your nineteen patrol officers and the four sergeants working each night. Are you asking me, do we have a plan to add additional officers, or what we're doing with the current officers we have?
Yes, I'm, I'm asking, what is the plan? What is the strategic plan per year to add more officers to get to the geographical policing model to be fully staffed for a city with our population size? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, well, Ms. Sancha Stevens in council, it comes down to a revenue and expense question. And so, with the presentation we gave you earlier, is based upon where this city is in its tax base. About seventeen percent is commercial tax base, the balance is residential. We also know that within our residential, that we have some state-funded or state-mandated exemptions from property tax that challenge us on just collecting what is residential property tax. Given that the city already has fewer staff per capita than any other city, the way in which we get to more staff, and I'm just not going to say for police, it's for fire, it's for our internal service areas, is by growing our tax base. And so, we have to think about our strategic future and the I-ten corridor because our I-ten corridor is our future commercial base. I shared with council in one executive session, one project can take a property that's producing thirteen thousand dollars in property tax today to a property that's exceeding two million in property tax when we fully collect those property taxes. The secret is growing commercial property, not the residential. Residential can balance itself out. So, to answer your question is, we as a city are very early on in the growth of its commercial base. And that's our, that's our secret. That's the solution. And so, when council works on its strategic plan, and we say, we're all in on a wastewater treatment plan expansion, you're investing in that future. When you say, we are doing a master plan of where we're going to put transport infrastructure for wastewater in the south growth area, you're investing in this future. When we form close relationships with GV Sud to ensure that they're adequately serving the rest of the I-ten corridor with wa, water and wastewater, we're investing in that future. When we are aggressively seeking economic development projects, like the one I refer to very cryptically, and we are successful in landing those projects, you are investing in that future to increase staffing. That's how we get there.
No, and I agree with you with that. I was just wondering, why are we releasing resources if we know that we're already short? If, if we can utilize those resources within our city so we can continue to build that fully staff, so we can get that, and it also, that we can get that geographical policing model, and as well as relieve the burnout or the, the short-staffed feeling from our current patrol officers?
When you say releasing police officers?
Re-leasing, I guess, re-allocating them to the SRO program. Because we know that the school district, they have already made a position that they will do peace officers, which means that they will hire from, from any other entity, right? As long as they're getting their peace officers. But being that our need, looking at what we've already looked at, our tax base and how we're needing to look at our reserve base, why, if we're even really needing to look at reserve base, are we allowing these resources to?
I guess I want to be clear, we're, we're not releasing officers, council. Once we fill the nineteen positions in patrol, there is no other positions. Those other positions are funded by the school district. They have to go there. We don't have order patrol because we would be charged for them. So, the, the school district right now has nine officers assigned to it.
Right.
Right? So, as we fill our ranks in patrol, the, that is our obligation to now fill the ranks there, that's where they go at. I couldn't put any else in, put any money in patrol because it would come out of our general fund. So, I, I think that when you, when you look at our staffing slide here, that nineteen officers is what we're going to have filled. Everything else is budgeted under the SR, SRO program. There is no other officers. We're not releasing officers over there. I mean, we're not, we're not taking officers from patrol, we're filling patrol. And then, we have an obligation to fill these because those are what the officers are hired for. That's the budget we have.
So, Chief Andres, this chart shows where you have vacancies. You have filled your nineteen patrol positions, some are in academies, but those positions are filled.
Yep.
Okay.
And as they trickle out, now they'll be going, moving new officers into the SRO program. But I just want to say, we, that is where they will be at. I don't have any other positions.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the SRO budget.
So, chief, just to make it clear, if we pull the SROs out, now we're on the hook for those salaries, which we don't have the finance to support, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. So, this is kind of where we are in, in the program. I think for us, the main thing is, council, we will be able to do geographic policing. We will have our positions filled, based on where we at. I would love with council and the city manager's offices, we sit to determine whether we add an officer a year. At some point, I, I think that we have to have a plan, but obviously, you have to have a budget to support it. So, I'd love to be a part of those conversations. But strategically, my goal is to get us at least a staffing where we have an officer in all of our districts. That's where I strategically like us to get to. And then, from there, we would be, obviously, working on other models as council would be open in the city manager's office for consideration. All right. So, as we get into the dispatch ILA, one of the things that we'll be covering here is, as you look at our cost model, we talk about currently, in the year that we're in, we, we currently here, when you look at the calls for twenty-four, twenty-five, we're at about fifty thousand calls. This is not at the end of the year. This is where we are when those numbers were ran a month ago. One of the important things I want to point out on the slide is that for FY twenty-three, twenty-four, just looking at police and fire, last year, we had about thirty thousand calls, right? Four hundred and fifty-one calls resulted in about a forty-nine, a forty-four point nine percent of, of calls based on the total amount of about sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine. When I call this number out, I'm talking about just between police and shirts, police and fire. Shirts obviously had, during the same year, about thirty-seven thousand four hundred and eight calls, which resulted in them of those sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine calls seeing about fifty-five point one percent. Why that's important is because the shirts, then the shirts ILA, they count EMS against themselves, right? It's their employees, so they accumulate that call when it's, when we look at the overall call volume. We'll talk about that on the next slide. So, just between those agencies, when you go to the next slide, the next thing that you see and you look at our dispatch services, the total amount of calls in FY twenty-four and twenty-five was about eighty-two thousand nine hundred and fourteen calls that you saw on the last slide. When shirts adds EMS in too, they are counting it against themselves, they have about that period last year, sixty-three percent of the calls they were responsible for. Civilo, police, and fire, obviously, we're responsible for about thirty-seven percent. When you look at those two years from FY twenty-two, twenty-three to now, calls have increased in civilo about two percent, right? Over the, over the last year, in shirts, it went down two percent. So, obviously, that affects our cost model. Last year, when you look in FY twenty-five, currently where we're in right now, still in that gear, we had it, our expenditures of that full, one point four hundred and eight thousand dollars, roughly, we had about four hundred and ninety-three thousand was the calls that we had when you, when you looked at the cost breakdown. Obviously, our annual payment, when you divided that by four, was about a hundred and twenty-three thousand. This year, the proposal for our dispatch services, when you look at this, it's important for me to point out, at the bottom, total dispatch annual costs for staffing went down. They lost some experienced dispatchers, hired new dispatchers, so their staffing costs went down. So, looking at that, our, based on the thirty-seven percent that we have, we, we'll have about five hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars is what our new proposed amount would be. Quarterly payment of about one twenty-nine, five sixty-five. So, that's how those cost models are break down, I want to make sure that it's clear. It went up, obviously, our costs did because our costs went up. That's basically the moral of that story. So, going into PD overtime, as we get into PD overtime, one of the things I want to talk about is patrol. Patrol is kind of our biggest driver, obviously, with overtime. Holidays, and it's important to know when we talk about overtime, I want to make sure that overtime is a big bucket. Our holiday pay comes out of that bucket, which is a, which is one of the biggest drivers that you see come out of there. Thirteen holidays, when you multiply that time eight hours, and you look at a hundred and four hours per officer and sergeant, that's a large share of our overtime costs that's coming out. The next is late calls. Obviously, with police officers, we can't determine when our calls come in. We typically run late calls. If we're getting a call late in the shift, we got a report, we make an arrest, et cetera, et cetera. Those all go to late calls. When you look at training, we have a lean staffing model, and we will have a lean staffing model when you look at that. Most of our training, as Mr. Reed mentioned earlier, is mandatory over, mandatory training that we, it happens on overtime. That's when we have to get that training done. Extra shifts is a driver on there. The extra shifts, obviously, for patrol, we work a twelve The extra shifts, obviously for patrol, we work a twelve-hour-a-day shift in a two-week pay cycle, right? That's eighty-four hours. Many times, we cannot flex those four hours to get to eighty, especially again, if there's late calls, staffing is low, we can't flex them off. Supervisors earn about seven point five percent, when you look at their four hours and the extra hours that they come in for briefing and roll call training that they have to do. So ultimately, we only have one supervisor, and that's seven point five typically can't be flexed, because you have to have a supervisor working. The other thing with patrol is coverage, and most of the eleven percent, that's not officers, that's supervisors. When a supervisor take off, gotta have a supervisor working. That's your eleven percent of overtime, because we don't have two supervisors, we have to replace them. And obviously, our special overtime, many of those overtimes that we have that are driven there, is a lot that comes in with some of the programs that we have, with our officers that are in our succession plan and program, and officers that are assigned to training, you know, weapons, as well as our less lethal weapons. So that's, kind of breaks down that overtime expenses in PD. Animal Services, mi- much like PD, I will tell you, it's about the same, same thing. The biggest driver for us is covering shifts. We're finally full-staffed in Animal Services, but over the last year, we were averaging about three to four. Some of my calls in sick, it typically generated overtime. But most of the time, we're able to manage that, as you see with their numbers, it's not very high. Animal Services also incurs late calls. If they get a late call, obviously, they need to respond out to that call and take care of, of that, of the animal, to make sure they got the appropriate care. And then the other thing is mandatory training that sometimes comes in with Animal Services with a lean staff. Many times, I can tell you, that rarely happens, rarely happens. On, 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 on occasion, you may see that, but most of those things, we're managing that. Going into Support Services, I don't think there's nothing here with that. We have a lean staff, mostly the overtime there is in records, but we're able to flex them off, so we have minimal overtime in that division, in that area. SRO Program. Back to that, the SRO program, as we talked about, is a cost-neutral program. Many of the overtime hours you see here, it's the overtime that the officers are earning as comp time, obviously at one point five, that they bank, and is now used in the summer session. The other thing that's important to note, or any of their vacation and holidays are also a part of this program, to manage the program that they off. They take that when schools in, they burn the rest in the summer months. So it's a net zero program for us. The SROs, obviously, the two that we have, some of those hours you see on there is their compensation for their overtime that they earn, which the school district pays. So we're managing that program, and it's working well. CID, most of the CID overtime that you see on there is, basically, when they have extra shifts or extra calls, the detectives obviously have to be called out, when they're called out to come out and investigate a case, or they have to stay over. The other driver for us is that, is our council meetings, our detectives cover council. I do require them to flex, and many times, they're flexing during the week, it's only if they can't flex, right? Because things have popped up. But we typically manage that. And other than that, when you look at special, they, our detectives are a part of different committees, obviously, they sit on those committees, and if some of those run into overtime, but again, most of that's manageable. So we have minimal overtime in that area. Traffic, nothing to discuss. We have one officer, as you can see throughout the year, he's at about three hours of overtime. That's about all we had with him, so we managed that program pretty well. Admin, as you look at the admin unit, we have, we do have a sergeant and an officer assigned to the admin division. Most of the overtime that you see there, when you, when you look at that, is the sergeant, he sometime has to cover, if we have a staffing shortage on the shift, he will sometime have to fill in, so we're not burning out the same consistent charge, sergeants covering. The other, when you look at overtime, a lot of those things, when you start looking at special, our employees work Cibolo Fest, they work Holiday Parade, that's their overtime that you see making up in that division. So proposed changes in the I-L-A, what I would present to council, they did not make many changes. I'll talk with you about one of the big changes that they have decided. The school district has asked in the I-L-A if council would consider, when five campuses are filled, adding an additional position. Obviously, we wouldn't fill that position till we have everything else filled, but as I told council, we're there, right? We will be in a position, once those people are hired in patrol, to add an additional position. So I would only ask council to consider that. I think it does help us to fill our SRO ranks and allow our supervisors to be able to respond to those campuses, instead of one being locked on a campus. This is the same thing they're offering to the city of shirts. The other thing I would tell council is that they did make an amendment in there, and it goes with the sergeant responsibilities. It would be if we, if you all approved the I-L-A. Again, it talks about our sergeants being able to attend the meetings and roll and respond to campuses, and keep that communication flow. The school district added language to the SRO I-L-A that talks about class instructions. That was not in the last I-L-A, but they are, we do provide class instructions, we always have, when it comes to interaction with police officers. We've done that, but that language needs to be cleaned up in the I-L-A on their side. Additionally, when it comes to the school-based law enforcement training, every SRO in our program in Cibolo has that training, but they want that included in the I-L-A, because it's supposed to be. The officers have up to a year to get that training. That's not an issue for us, we make sure they're trained in the appropriate timeframe. And then lastly, they request a copy that you'll see in there of our liability insurance. Their lawyers looked at that, that standard, that wasn't in the I-L-A, they wanted to add that in there. And then last, everybody knows about HB thirty-three. That bill really is more leaning towards the police department, when it comes to being trained and responding to critical incidents at the school. The only thing that's left for the school district is their requirement is to add a ballistic shield and a breaching tool, which they are going to have on every campus next year. So that's their side of HB thirty-three, the rest of it is on PD. So that is the small amendments added there. I would say to council, as we take a look at the cost of the program, I call your attention to that last, you know, slide, that last column you see there. Currently, our program is about a million forty-four thousand dollars, right? With the current officers that we have in there, we do have vacancies in that program. With the annual cost that would go into this new program, raises, our benefits, dentals, and all of those things that went up, obviously, they use cars, our leasing program, that all of those cost projections would bring that program with the nine officers to about one point two million seventy-six thousand dollars. So that's what we would be, two hundred, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars is what we would look at. If council approved an additional officer, obviously, you see, it would raise it to about one point three hundred and ninety-eight thousand for that additional officer. I want to say again, that's a net zero program to council. The way this program is managed, it doesn't have a cost to us. It, obviously, the school district is aware of the program, it is their idea to add an additional officer, which would benefit the city of Cibolo, and allow us to have those campuses covered. My main goal with the SRO program is that they're taking care of the schools, and patrol is taking care of the city, and that's why we need a program that does that. There's no gaps, there's no vacancies, that program does not lean on the police department, because it can support itself and provide that service. So that's just, I want to pass that information along.
How much does the ballistic shield cost? And that will be a cost to our general fund in the police?
No, they're purchase, they're going to purchase it, council. Yeah, they, they, they've decided, because they have to get it for shirts too, that they don't want to be into buying two different things, they're going to sit down with the police department, take our expertise, but they're going to buy the same equipment for both cities.
And does the additional officer increase our SROs to ten from nine?
I'm sorry?
Does the additional SRO increase our total, SRO officers from, to ten from nine?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. It would bring the program to ten, yes, ma'am. So that's kind of where we're at with, with the I-L-A and the cost that's going, obviously, we wanted to get that in front of you before we put that there. But if there's any questions about the presentation, thank you. I'm going to pass it on to our great fire chief.
Do it. Oh, that was great, okay. Alrighty. Mayor Pro-Tim, council, be discussing our fire department compensation and retention? If you look here in the fire department, just like the police department, national trend difficulty of hiring public servants is difficult. The city is competing with other surrounding fire departments and other metro areas to recruit that and retain that top talent. One thing that I would definitely want to call out is, you know, we recently had a significant weather event, and if you look at, that if we did not invest in our top talent and retain them, you know, that outcome could have been a little different. You know, on that day, they responded to eight swiftwater rescues, and saved and pulled twelve people out of the swiftwater, and responded to two structural fires. So to invest in your employees, you know, to keep that and retain that top talent is very crucial. You know, I definitely want to, you know, commend for council, you know, obviously, we did that compensation within, in November, it did definitely helped out. And if you look at the, the current salaries there, that does reflect our compensation. And if you look at this slide here, just going to call out there, that twenty-nine percent, excuse me, last year was at forty-three percent. So you, you see the move that we made, we were retaining some, some good talent, okay? And then if you look at that, that, that should be reflect seventy-one percent instead of sixty-one percent. Apologize for having that, but we, we're, we're keeping staff now. We'll go to the next slide there. Of course, if you see the FTEs, where they've seen the turnover, and then of course, this year-to-date, we've had two people leave. One was left the fire service to take care of family, and the other one was an employee passing.
Emphasized that they have other agencies. The, delivery agencies.
Mayor, Pro-Tim and council, I just want to emphasize, and again, thank the council, thank our voters for approving Prop C for you implementing that through your budget. We had six firefighters leave our agency last year for other agencies, for a variety of reasons, but compensation was one. New Braunfels took three of our firefighters alone. Because of our market adjustment, we've lost no firefighter to another agency. And I'm not going to say that's always going to be the case, but clearly, the dramatic change in losing firefighters to other agencies has a direct correlation to our market adjustment.
It has a little bit to do with it. So the next slide here, obviously reflects the different positions that we have within the organization, and, and this is something that I presented before, not going to really dive into that, unless you have a, one position that you're really focused on, I can elaborate on. I'll go to move to the next one. And of course, you know, in regards to staffing, you know, our, our standard that we follow NPA seventeen-ten, and also requirements for two men, two people in, two people out. So that's the word, staffing is very crucial. And here, just like the police department, you know, we'll discuss overtime. Within the past six months, we've experienced several driving factors in overtime, with the expected need to hire overtime, we look at the different categories there. FMLA, leave without pay, parental leave, employees step up into those positions, where we, we do have that extra staffing. One thing that I do want to point out, and we pointed out before, is that Prop C, we did get that extra firefighter, that, that did help, but as soon as we got that implemented, we had an individual who's in the military reserves, and he got activated, so he's gone for six months, so we just had to reassign him, so we're back to square one. But it did, but it did help. Aside these factors, we've scheduled personnel with approved training and approved vacation, with appropriate coverage in place, but unfortunately, circumstances go beyond our control, and of course, FMLA, leave without pay, and parental leave, we have to fill, we have to fill those spots to maintain our staffing. And of course, just like in all the other departments, we're, we're doing a lot more with less to keep our community safe. And just like, within the police department, we do have that overtime bucket, and just with the, our standard straight overtime that's scheduled with their work schedule and the holiday pay, that's two hundred and seventy-eight, seventy-eight thousand dollars just already allocated to that. So, you know, that's stuff that we can't control, that's already allocated to that. So if you look at that, that graph there with overtime, you know, just in professional development, you know, when classes come in, we, we've, we've had to backfill thirteen shifts to, to fill. Employee calling in sick, we've had to hire twenty-four shifts to cover overtime. Workers comp, FMLA, leave without pay, parental leave, thirty-one shifts that we had to get covered, and that's just to maintain minimum staffing. Then of course, our employee that, that ended passing, that's fourteen shifts that we had to, we had to get covered. We did have one that we had vacation, that we had to cover for vacation, that was an employee, that in the interview process, he goes, "I, I want to come work for the city of Cibolo, but I already have a vacation scheduled with my family, am I going to be able to take that?" So of course, I said yes. So of course, with him being off, I had to hire for vacation. So that was eighty-eight shifts that we had to cover, and you see the diagram there, broken down in, in the section. So this is our, our organizational chart for staffing. If you do recall, when we opened up Station Three, we opened up a minimum staffing, and we've slowly been adding staff, but we're, we're still a little shy. You know, we still need two more firefighters to finish out the total build-out for Station Three, and that'll help us get in compliance with seventeen-ten, and also help with our, with our overtime as well. Do y'all have any questions or anything?
Well, I guess my question would be directed towards Mr. Reed. What timeframe are we looking for, for Fire Station Four? Because I know he's going to have to start looking for those.
Yeah, actually, I'd like Brian to come up and talk about Fire Station Four, and really relates to the SAFER grant on when we time the construction of that. You good with that, Mr. Huggins?
Sure. So, you know, we were applying for that SAFER grant and looking to get an answer from the government on that grant in October timeframe of this year. If we get approved for that grant and get the, the funding for the personnel, then we're going to, we actually met with the design team from Icon today, and told them we're going to push forward with the construction of that building as soon as we can. So by the time we get all the logistics in place for getting construction going, we're looking at January timeframe for going out to bid for the construction companies, so on and so forth. If we don't get the SAFER grant this year, then we're looking at probably pushing that construction to the fall of twenty-twenty-six, to start, which will put us about eighteen to twenty-four months for construction.
Right.
You know, that's going to be the place, case in matter, by the time we start, is about a two-year construction period, eighteen to twenty-four months. But it all depends on the great, the grant, if we're going to have the personnel right away to put in there, or are we going to have the time to try to get those, that phase, that personnel hiring over the next three years?
All right.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir, it does, sure. Sure does, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
So just wanted to go over the composition for the Public Works Department and our retention efforts, efforts. So I will say that the retention rate for our department has improved greatly with the adjustments from last year's market adjustments, but as always, where staffing needs remain due to expanding responsibilities. We've been a lot better to handle extreme weather conditions, thanks to the updated equipment that City Council has approved for us. Recruiting efforts have improved, but the labor market for blue collars still remains tight. Our Sarah Sarahs continue to grow over the past six years, so our street lane miles were three hundred and fifteen in twenty-twenty, and now we're above three hundred and seventy-eight miles, and will continue to increase with new developments in our area. The drainage area in twenty-twenty was about three hundred and sixty acres, now we maintain six hundred and twelve acres. We actually maintain almost nine hundred acres a month, because there are areas that we service twice a month, so the total capacity that our drainage department maintains monthly is roughly about nine hundred acres. And our public parks area- And our public parks area was 211 acres in 2020, now we're up to 240 acres. So our retention has improved, but we're still lacking the resources that we need. So the public parks, so that includes the Orbital Woods area and the Tolly Nature Preserve So the market adjustments in 2025 have possibly impacted our retention. Pay has no longer been a reason for our departures in our department. So I will say that has helped us tremendously with that. We had only five and a half positions created in the last six years. That half time, that part-time position is our part-time custodian position. I wanted to show what our salary increases were based off of the market adjustments. And so just as I said, this has helped us retain employees a lot longer in our department. So the total number of full-time employees in our streets department, as you can see, has remained consistent since 2020, even though our service area continues to grow. The average experience from our team members is roughly about 47% in the one to five-year range. So we have a lot of new employees in that department this past year. So we had three employees that departed this past year. We had two due to the retirement, and one we had to let go for administrative reasons. And so this right here shows the positions, our vacancies. So this shows our current staffing levels within our streets department. We do have one vacancy that we filled already in for the street maintenance worker. We're currently interviewing positions for our crew leader position. One of the things that I did want to point out, I know is one of the things that Ms. Roberts had pointed out, where is training. And so we did allocate funding in our meetings with Ms. Miranda for training for each department. So for our streets department, we're looking at doing CDL training. We're looking at two positions to do that for next fiscal year, as well as getting another Level 1B roadway specialist. So that'll help when we're paving roads. They'll be able to look at asphalt, making sure that the asphalt is quality asphalt when we're getting that material into our department.
How many of our street workers do not have their CDL?
So currently, right now, in our actual streets department, we have two positions that have a CDL, and one of them is our superintendent.
We only have two that have the CDL?
Sir?
We only have two that have a CDL?
Yes, and one of them is our superintendent position. So we're doing training, and so we have a program in place that we do send them to certification, we get them their permit, and they have to get their license within one year of that. And so right now, we have six, we have six employees going through that training, and three have gotten their permit so far. In our drainage departments, our full-time employees, currently, we're sitting at 11. We added one position last year, which was our MS4 inspector position. This is another department that benefited greatly from the market adjustments. But as you can see, we're a fairly new department and division in the drainage with 40% roughly in the one to five-year range. This past year, we had two employees that resigned within this department, and that was, it wasn't due to pay or anything, it was just they were trying to get closer to where they live. So we had one that lived in Pleasanton. We had another one, I forget the area that he was in, but they decided to take positions with jobs that were closer to their homes. And in this department, for training for next year, we're looking at doing CDL training, of course, and we're also looking at getting their MS4 certifications and stormwater inspector training within that department to help benefit them as well. And our parks department, we've remained pretty consistent, so we have the 11 and a half positions. So this department, even though it's parks, this is parks and facilities department, so that not only do they maintain the parks, they also service our facilities. That half position is a part-time custodian position, and currently, we have, we had, this is one of the departments where we had the most turnover. We've had, this past year, we've had two people retire and two resign, and then one person that we had to let go. Training for the parks department, so we're looking at doing irrigation training, so we're going to have two individuals go to irrigation training for that. We're sending one person to get their certified playground certification, inspector position, and then we're also sending four individuals to get their pesticide certification. So that's the training that we have lined up for our parks department this next fiscal year. And this shows our current staffing level within our parks division. So currently, right now, we do have one full-time custodian. We have a part-time custodian position that we're trying to fill currently. We did have a person hired for that, but they decided to take another full-time position elsewhere. So we're still trying to hire that position, and this is one of those positions that we're trying to see if we can possibly convert in the future with the acquisition of the new facilities, so seeing what we can do with that position. In our utilities department, so we added one position in FY '24. This was probably the biggest department that we saw the most need for having individuals that benefited greatly from the market adjustment last year. As you can see, we had a lot of turnover in this department, and almost 60% of this department is fairly new. But with the market adjustments, we've done a great job of retaining employees within this division. This is our current layout for our utilities department. So our investment and professional development has been a big key for our utilities department. So the fact that we're able to get employees, get them trained up, they know that we're going to pay for their certifications, we're paying for their licensee, helps us retain those employees, along with the market adjustments that we did. We've done a great job with recruitment and growing our department in-house. So a lot of our employees transitioned from streets and drainage, go into the wastewater and water department, and that helps us a lot. So I just wanted to show counsel what that adjustment looked like when we went to 100% of market. So this made us really competitive with the surrounding cities in our area and has greatly helped us retain employees within our utility department. And last but not least is our Public Works Administration Department. So we do still need more support within this division. We do have nine positions currently right now, which is myself, and my old position, which was the CIP manager, we are converting that into an assistant director position. Salary scales and everything is exactly the same, it just makes us more aligned with the layout of what we're looking for of our overall department. We have our executive assistant, our two infrastructure inspectors, our administrative assistant. We converted one of our fleet technicians into the fleet manager, and now we have our fleet mechanic as well. So we did have the two full-time employees that we lost this past year was, of course, Mr. Fuess for retirement and Jacob Parsons that left to be the Public Works Director. So those are the only two vacancies that we had this past year. And this right here shows what our structure would look like. So the two assistant directors, one would be overseeing utilities and superintendent parks and facilities and utilities, and then the other one would be overseeing drainage and streets. And we assign one with fleet and the other one with inspections.
And so it's going to put you back to doing all the capital improvements.
So I'll be overseeing the program as a whole, but I'll still be working with the two direct, assistant directors. So we're, the directors, assistant directors, as far as the projects go, will still be overseeing the CIP.
There was a reason why we, former council had asked for that, and now we're going back to the way it was before. I just see this to be a problem because then those capital improvement projects go to the wayside because you've got to take, I'm just telling you from past.
Yes.
I hope that you can fulfill it. But there was a reason, Mr. Reed knows this, there was a reason we went out for strictly a CIP. You know it because you were it.
Yes, sir.
So I just.
So if I.
So I will say, another thing that has helped us greatly with this is, if you notice that when we presented this, we did this presentation this past year, we talked about incorporating the full cost of these CIP projects, so allocating those costs for capital administration. So that's going to help us oversee these projects, along with the Public Works Director overseeing, making sure that these projects do get completed on time and on schedule.
And I'll just add, there's no one more committed to delivering capital improvement projects on time and as close to budget consistently as me. When I came here, council wanted an assistant city manager, and what I said is, no, you need a CIP manager. So with Julio Gomez joining our team, he has shown that expertise around CIP makes a difference, in addition to having a council supportive of it, having a city manager's office supportive of it, and adding staff. So we did not have two public improvement inspectors back when I started. You see that we've invested in inspectors here. The MS4 senior inspector complements those two inspectors by relieving our inspectors of having to go out just for erosion control SWIP measures. We have made this program more robust. So Mr. Hicks, you and I are on the same page. We are going to continue to deliver on our promises around capital improvement projects. This restructuring only strengthens the way that we will manage CIP, not weaken it.
So does counsel have any questions about the progress on recruitment and retention and police, fire, and public works based on information provided? And does counsel recognize the positive impact of market competitive pay and the importance of remaining competitive, given the emphasis on attracting younger workforce across police, fire, and public works?
I do have a question for you, Mr. Gomez, just kind of looking into the future, a little bit past the next fiscal year. Being that we're looking to hopefully get those funds for the trailhead, and we're, I'm looking at the future of the maintenance of that trailhead, how much staff do you think we should be adding, looking in the future? And I know that we have constraints to this budget, but we should be looking at those things as projects are being completed, such as parks? What are we looking at? What would be ideally what we should be acquiring as far as full-time employees to help maintain these trailheads?
So I will say, at some point, I would like to see us do an efficiency study within public works to see exactly what those staffing levels would be needed, not just now, but in the future, over the next five years. I can say that on the parks and facility side, we're acquiring new facilities. Eventually, the Tolly Nature Preserve is going to be up and running, the Orbital Woods. So those are two that we really have to look at, trying to fill positions. And in addition to that, when we're talking about our streets maintenance program, so currently, right now, we have one crew that's dedicated to street repair. Not only do they do the long lane base repairs, but they also do the crack sealing, and they try to do all the C click fixes that we get in for that. So I know when we're, when we get feedback and saying, well, we've submitted a C click fix, we haven't got that done, well, we're getting to that, but we're also having to do the crack sealing, we're having to do the long lane, we're trying to incorporate a maintenance plan. So those are all positions that eventually we will have to fill, we will have to create. But of course, I'd like to do an efficiency study to show what that build-out would look like over the next five years to give y'all better information on that.
Since, Mr. Gomez, since you came from San Antonio, how did they do it with, I know because San Antonio River, that trail, I mean, it follows the San Antonio River all the way out to the missions from downtown. Do they have people that literally will drive, like, not a golf cart, but I mean, like what we have, the little mules or the gators, and go and patrol, I mean, to clean up?
Yeah, so Sarah, Sarah has her own maintenance program, but the city of San Antonio has their parks and recs program. So it's two different, two different areas. I know they do that drain the river every year, where they go out there and they do a full cleanup.
Well, I knew that, but I'm talking about the trails that go along with the San Antonio, yes.
The actual park trails, the trailhead system. So they do allocate positions for that, but it's, I mean, just like every other city, they have to go and argue and fight for those positions. I can tell you that even in a large city like that, they're very understaffed, even when I was a public works.
Well, that's why I was getting at. So we need to be looking at future filling or trying to fill this.
Right. And so that's why I say, like, doing an efficiency study, looking at it at a five-year layout and showing what, in the next five years, where does our staffing levels need to be at? Not just for streets, but drainage, utilities, all aspects of public works.
Yeah, because this project lets next year, and hopefully, it'll be done within the year.
Yes.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure we've got employees dedicated, just like for the fire department and Fire Station 4, we're going to need the manpower.
So that's why David, so David is taking the initiative on the parks stuff when it comes to training, because we are going to be having NIMITs and Veterans Park that we're going to be making improvements on, so we want to make sure that we're able to maintain those parks as well. So we're trying to take the steps that we have with the current staffing levels, but also look at what we need for future.
So when 1103 gets done in like 35 years, the sound walls that are going in on Phase 1, there's going to be a four-foot gap. And I remember in probably 2018, 2019, when they first had their meetings, I asked about who was going to maintain that, and they said that the city would be mowing the space between the wall and the residence. So I don't know that that's still the case. Again, that was years and years and years ago, but maintaining the right-of-way on 1103 may, it may take more time with the sound walls. I don't know, I don't know anything about it, other than the sound walls are going to be four feet from the HOA fence.
So if it's tech stop right-of-way, the city does not touch it.
Okay.
It opens up a new liability for us. But let's say we did, we'd have to have an ILA with tech stop. We have no ILA, and we don't plan on going in the right-of-way.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking that would be equipment that would have to fit back there and then extra time, it'd just be a hassle.
I don't know who told you that, but that, I would tell you, is a very inaccurate reflection of how things work.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
If I can comment about what Mr. Hicks said regarding the trails in San Antonio, and I don't know if, we don't need to drill down into it this much right now, but I'm a regular rider, I bicycle down those trails all over the city, and they leave them pretty wild and, they don't pick them up very often. They don't have the manpower, they, there will be debris found 10 or 15 feet high in the trees after one of these flood events that stays up there for months and months. So not sure what we envision about our city, but they're used to letting it be pretty wild. Park Police and some others do occasionally zoom down the trails and look around on their golf carts.
And I will say that our drainage department and our parks department work very closely with each other. We do have areas that overlap, and we try to do the best that we can. So one thing with public works, I will say that even though we have four different divisions, we all work together to try to maintain everything that we have within the city.
Well, I just want to say that my expectation is not that they're cleaned up like a golf course. To leave it in a natural state is, I think, okay, but there will be people that want it cleaned up like a golf course.
Yes.
Mayor and counsel, if you have no questions in response to this, and I would say I would have added a third question if I would have realized, but you've already given Chief Andres direction on the SRO program, that was the third piece of feedback that you had on this presentation. If you have no questions, I'd like at least Elizabeth Taplin to give a presentation tonight on the status of employee compensation market study. And if you want to delay the presentation on information services, just let us know, and we will put that on the next, not the next council agenda, because that pack, it's already done, but the next one in July.
Do you want verbal direction on the SRO contract? I don't know that we gave direction, we kind of nodded.
I would like official direction on the SRO contract, and it was to add one SRO officer, which would be cost neutral to the city, and it would be filled with patrol being full and as we fill all the other SRO positions.
Then I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
I'm sorry, I missed that whole thing. You're going to have to, we were doing a sidebar over here.
My, I want to make sure I have clear direction from council on the SRO program. So Chief Andres asked, would you support in the amendment to the ILA adding one new SRO officer that would be filled when patrol is full, which it is right now, and the other SRO positions, which are currently in the ILA, are filled? Would you support that? And so I have four yeses over here.
I would prefer having a fully-staffed geographical policing model. I think I mentioned that last year. This is nothing against, you know, the SRO program, this is about protecting our families all year round and even the summertime. This is about deloading the stressful burnout impact of our current staff right now. I would encourage all of council to do a ride-along and to experience what our I would encourage all of council to do a ride-along and to experience what our current patrol officers have to go through. It's easy to just kind of make these decisions to say, you know, yes, fund all these, and then they're still left struggling, you know, with their current low staff status. But I would prefer it to be a fully-staffed geographical policing model. I know that more than 19, because I think, yeah, more than 19 better, but yes, I'll go ahead and say yes for moving forward with it. But I just wanted to make note that I would prefer to have better circumstances with the geographic policing model now.
Just to clarify, the SRO program is a net zero for us. So the district pays 100% of their salary. I think we all would be on board with getting the model, the geographic model paid for, but we have to find money to hire all of those officers. The, the ILA with the school district covers the salary for these officers. So while we're adding an officer to our force, the salary would be fully covered by the school district. Whereas if we hired those officers for the geographic model, we'd have to find that money in the budget somewhere as an ongoing annual cost for their salary. So I think that's something we should work toward, but it's not a, we can't have that because we're doing this. Like there, it's a completely different funding source.
No, sure. I agree with you, Katie. No, and it's not about that. It's about, we have experienced longtime officers on the force that could continuously be patrolling our city. So what I'm saying is that, as it says in our presentation, we are wanting to attract younger. So we're getting people that are going to be new to, to the departments. It's just like what Mr. Gomez said about the public works. We have a lot of new people. You know, so it, it's just we're, we're losing the, the, the top tier, the experience. And I get it, it's going to be fully covered by the district, it has nothing to do. It's just that we're going to have such a young staff within our police force. And, and that's, that, that's, that's the only trade-off that we're doing. Yeah.
I heard Ms. Roberts respond. Mr. Hicks, did you respond on the direction on? Okay. All right. Thank you. That was good direction. Thank you.
From managing chronic illnesses, and we're also hoping with the wellness committee to provide ongoing support, both in mental health and just overall health of our employees. Our benefits plan year, as you know, shifted from October 1, which we've had, up to January 1. With that happening, we won't have an idea of what our actual renewal is going to look like until about October 2025. We did ask for an estimate from our broker. They're looking at about a 12% increase. That's from what I told you, we've got some emerging claims. We've got some claims that are already in existence, and so they look at that data and try to give us a good idea of what that might look like. We added the mid-gold plan, if you remember, to this benefit year. That saved the city about $40,000 annually, and feedback from the staff has been well received. It's just been a great tool for them, for those who don't want to be in the top plan. They're able to go with that mid-gold, which saves them money and the city as well. And lastly, on a program update, our utilization rate for our employee assistance program, I wanted to point this out, is at 12%. The average utilization rate across the nation is about 3% to 5%. Our employees are being well taken care of, both on their health, their mental health, and as well as any personal needs or concerns that they have as well through our EAP. So our next steps, we're going to finish working on our data collection and our job description review. We will meet with the city manager's office and finance to review the initial findings that we have. We've been working very closely with them over the past few months. Once that happens and we get direction from them, we'll meet with our executive team. We'll review those job descriptions that they've given us and also show them individual employee results as well. With any feedback that we have from the executive team, we'll meet back with the city manager's office and finance, and then we'll have a recommendation for you at our July 8 meeting. Here's the timeline. We just kind of talked about it. Right now, we're working on finalizing those job descriptions. We're going to complete our data analysis, and we'll meet with the city manager's office and finance. In July, we will continue that process, and then in our meeting, we'll deliver recommendations to you, including costs of the implementation. August and September, we'll work with you to figure out what that looks like. And then as you give us direction on pay increases, they will take effect. Do you guys have any questions or thoughts?
Oh, I, sorry, I thought of something. So I work for another city and are, for a long time, the wellness, before they created a department, wellness was provided through our medical insurance company that the city contracted with. And they actually came out and did wellness sessions, nutrition sessions. It wasn't just EAP. It was actually like health-related for chronic illnesses. They had a diabetes thing. There are a whole bunch of different things. So depending on who our insurance provider ends up being, that might be an option to help you kickstart that wellness group that you're talking about.
Absolutely. We have done wellness fairs over the past few years. That's, that'll be a huge, like you said, just educating our employees. This focus really will be those chronic conditions that we've seen through our report, really focusing on education of our employees and also talking city-wide about how we can manage those better. But yes, we will be doing those wellness fairs. Thank you.
There's also another program called Virgin Pulse, and it's like a pedometer thing, and you get money towards your health savings account if you participate. I can never, I always forget my login, so I don't do it. But I know a lot of people where I work do use that, and they get a good amount of money throughout the year just from participating. And then it also helps promote healthy habits and things like that, too.
Absolutely. And we can talk to our broker about adding that. I don't think we have Virgin Pulse, but have done it in other cities, and it's been fantastic. So we can talk to our broker about adding that.
There's another one called Lemonade. That's just like what Ms. Cunningham's talking about. That's really good and does the same, same type of payback to you for different things that you may do throughout the year.
Excellent.
But I do have one more quick question.
Sure.
Whenever you're talking about this increase, or the market study, so are we going to have the salaries to, to compare to? Because this is my first year doing this, and so I want to make a very educated decision as to what we're going to do. But are we going to be able to see the salaries that you're comparing these two to what our salaries are here at Tbilok?
You were shaking your head yes.
Yeah, the answer is yes. Last year, when you're looking at patrol officers, lieutenants, captains, which we don't have a captain position, or in fire, you have firefighters, FAOs, battalion chiefs. It's real easy to do comparison. So this one is actually a little more complex, because they're having to dig into, they may say or may have the same title, but we want to make sure it's the same job. So we'll be happy to share that detailed data with you. I, I don't say, I, I don't think we're going to do it in a public meeting, but we'll say, if you would like to sit down with Elizabeth and Wayne, here's the time for you to come in and have an appointment with us, because it might take just an hour for one or two of you to dig through that with us and have your questions answered. So we'll be happy to share all of that with you. And to be clear, I, in my city manager tour to visit all the different departments, all the service areas prior to the start of the budget season, I said the same thing to them. We'll be very transparent. We were transparent with all police and fire and public works last year when we moved those positions. So.
So, so.
Answer is yes. Sorry, that was a little long-winded.
No, it's okay.
Are you looking at changing the job descrip-, because I know Mrs. Hetzel did a, I mean, it took her a couple of years, wasn't it? To.
We're, we're making sure all job descriptions are up to date.
Took them a long time to do that, that description of the jobs. Wasn't it a couple of years she took doing that, right? Ms. Hetzel did that.
I, I think when, when Kristen was, was first on board, I think there was a, a study done by the Waters Group.
I'm talking about to do the job, because she's talking about, they're talking about comparing the, the job titles and changing them if need be. That's what I was saying.
Yeah. So we are doing, that's what this, this job description review is about. We are doing a job analysis on each of those. That does take time, but these are updated enough where we'll be able to work quickly through that. It is a long process. You are right. But because these are updated and current, we'll be able to work through them quickly. We have a great team.
I just knew it took her a long time.
It, it is a big process, but we have a fantastic team of three that will be able to.
Not saying you don't now, and I'm not saying that Christine or Ms. Hetzel didn't have a good team then, but I just knew it took a lot of time to, to get that process done. So I, I just don't want it to drag out, because.
No, sir. We'll have everything complete.
And I think they've been, they were updated then, but they were also updated somewhat at the last Baker-Tilly. At that time, and so I don't think all of them need updating. It's just.
Yeah, they've already been through the job analysis, like she said, with Baker-Tilly. So we'll just be rescoring them quickly to get good data. Good question, though. Thank you.
I also was curious if we could probably survey a couple of more cities that are also a little bit comparable to our budget size, population size, and maybe economic development just as well. I know, but it's important. Possibly Converse, because that's close by. Converse, Universal City. Let's see, Kyle, possibly. Mm-hmm. If we can include those. And also regarding the salary chart, is that something that could just be emailed to all of us? So we could have the, the salary chart, the, that we received, like the one we received last year?
Yep.
Excellent. Okay.
We can send that out to council. Council, we'll compare ourselves to other comparable cities. Cities like Converse and Universal City, which are slower growth and smaller in population and size of budget. I, I wouldn't compare us to them. They are not the communities that we're losing employees to. So that's my professional opinion. But Kyle's a good one. Hutto up in the Austin area is very similar to us as well. Elizabeth Taplin worked in that area. But it just takes more time if we're going to add more cities to it. The five cities we listed are cities that are in our social, economic area in which people can commute and work at those cities as easily as they could work with us. And so we believe that they're a really good set of five cities, and we used them for police, fire, and for public works last year. We also used them two years ago when we were looking at our market study.
I want to look at Seguin also. I'm just saying.
Seguin is in the five.
Yes, it's in here. Yes, and I, I do realize that Bernie also has a lesser population size than we do, but yet we're considering them, and they're on the other side of San Antonio. I was just curious, in this immediate area, just as well, what those cities are paying as our neighboring sister cities just as well? I just felt it would have been, it would be helpful.
We can look at them. What I'm, I'm trying to convey to you is that the cities that attract, attract top talent are listed right here, and I believe that they give us the best market analysis. I could say it differently. If we compare ourselves to those two cities, we might find that the market midpoint is lower.
Okay.
Because they're smaller, they are not as competitive as we are, and I don't advise that we try to lower the bar. I, I just don't think they're the right two cities.
So you're kindly saying no.
I'm, I'm kindly telling you in my professional opinion, I, I don't think that they're the right cities for us to compare ourselves to. I could ask Elizabeth how quickly we could just look at what their midpoints are.
Sure.
And I bet you their midpoints won't be, and so we'll take these five, and then we'll find the midpoint for those two cities. And what I'm telling you is that that midpoint's going to be lower. And so I don't want to lower my midpoint to save a buck when I know I'm not losing employees to those two cities. That's my point.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
It was just worth looking to see what the sister cities were doing.
I think Elizabeth said she can do that analysis.
Absolutely.
Because it's not going to be a detailed analysis of, are we comparing an apple to an apple? But if they have a utility clerk, we're going to compare their midpoint to our utility clerk. And we, we can do that, but I, my hypothesis is what I just shared with you. Mayor and Council, unless you're up for Information Services, I think you could call it a night. Um, what I'd like to emphasize, he is, he's been in the back taking care of us with technology. What, what I would say is your next budget workshop is July fifteenth, right? That's the right date. Uh, July eighth, though, we do have a fleet presentation and we have the market study update. We will get Tracy Beekman's IT presentation, if not on July eighth, because we already have a third item. I might bump that third item to the first meeting in July, to where your workshop on July eighth becomes another budget workshop, if you will. So that, that's the schedule of budget meetings over the next month. I wrote down city council actions here, based upon what you requested, we will follow up on those. With that, Mayor Pro Tim Roberts, I have nothing else to add.